This is the January 18th, 2018, meeting of the Northampton City Council. My name is Ryan O'Donnell. I'm the City Council President and I'll be presiding tonight. We begin with a period of public comment. It's an opportunity for members of the public to speak on any issue you wish. We ask only you keep it to three minutes or less. And the other rule is, we're prohibited by our rules from exchanging, going in a back-and-forth exchange with you. This is your time to give your opinion to the City Council. And the reason for these things is basically to make sure that everyone is heard fairly and receives equal time. So that being said, I'll go to the sign-up sheet. And the first person is Virginia Irvine. If you would come to the podium and please give your name and address for the record, and the floor is yours.
My name is Virginia Irvine. I live at 32 Crabback Lane. I am a board member of the organization Windwise Massachusetts. This is an organization that is a nonprofit organization that gives support to people that have been harmed by wind turbines in Massachusetts, industrial wind turbines we're talking here. So, I wanted to speak on your resolution for 100% renewable energy. And first of all, I'd like to say that your development of the pedestrian and the bike trail is incredible. I use it all the time. I walk 20, 25 miles a week. And part of that's into Florence on the bike trail, and the other thing is coming down here to Northampton on the bike trail. So, getting into the whereas's in the resolution, the disadvantages that are put on local control and those sorts of things, I'd just like to say that coming from a small town, that the facilities, the wind facilities in Massachusetts have been put in small rural communities. And so, those people are not normally thought of as a disadvantaged people. Your second whereas is that Northampton, that the state of Massachusetts and the city of Northampton can get 100% of the energy by harnessing abundant solar and wind resources. You have no wind resources here in the valley. And unless you have wind resources and you have wind developers knocking on your mayor's door, you're not going to know anything about it. And it does look out at these beautiful machines that are creating electricity. But believe me, if you live near one of these machines, some people have had to abandon their homes because of the noise, because of the other emissions, infrasound, and I don't have time to go into anymore. But that's, the law in Massachusetts states that noise is a contaminant, an air pollution contaminant, and therefore, we've been able to work on that.
Thank you very much. And the next person is Erveen Sobelmann.
Hi.
Hello.
My name is Erveen Sobelmann, and I live at 116 Laurel Park here in Northampton. I am a member of Climate Action Now, which is a local grassroots group dedicated to preserving a livable planet and creating a more just society. I'm standing here today in support of the resolution calling for 100% renewable energy. Personally, I'm a believer in the public trust doctrine, which requires that vital natural resources on which human well-being depends must be cared for by our governments for the benefit of all present and future generations. And that includes our water, our soil, our air, and significantly, our climate, all currently at risk due to our fossil fuel-driven energy system. So this resolution that is before you this evening sends a message to our state legislature that we support the statewide bill currently under consideration that mandates 100% renewables in the electric sector by 2035 and in all sectors by 2050, as well as some other building requirements, net zero for newly constructed buildings by 2030. Importantly, it also includes equitable access and green jobs and job training for environmental justice communities and displaced workers included in that as well. This resolution also states an intention for Northampton to set a goal of 100% renewable energy, not just to support the legislature in Boston, joining six other Massachusetts municipalities that have already adopted similar commitments, Amherst, Leverett, Cambridge, Framingham, Salem, and Lowell. And nationwide, nearly 50 cities have adopted similar resolutions and commitments, as did 150 mayors at the U.S. Conference of Mayors in June. So Northampton would be in good company. Let's encourage our state legislature to do the right thing, and let's take the lead here in Northampton. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person is Sharon Moulton. Ms. Moulton, please.
I'm Sharon Moulton, Ward 7, 48 Evergreen Road, and I'm speaking as part of the Climate Action Now Northampton 100% Renewable team. Erveen just presented some important points about the resolution, and I'm going to add a couple more. The resolution states an intention for Northampton to explore, to study, the possibility of establishing a community choice energy entity that could not only negotiate for competitive electricity rates for Northampton residents, businesses, and industries, but also develop a comprehensive energy plan that would develop, that would help us reduce our energy demand through strategic increases in both energy efficiency and local renewable energy generation. The resolution proposes that Northampton conduct this exploration in conjunction with some interested nearby communities, at least one of which has already passed a similar resolution. The exploration would seek information about both the benefits and the challenges for forming such an entity. This entity would be an innovative model that's been very successful in other states and has been implemented also on Cape Cod. It's time to show leadership in pursuing this model for the Pioneer Valley. Studies I've read about how we can achieve 100% renewable energy use talk about moving to the use of electricity for power, for all sources of energy, and to have that electricity generated from 100% renewable resources. Northampton can be a leader in taking steps to promote that possibility. As a regular representative of the public at Northampton Energy and Sustainability Commission meetings, I also see the passage of this resolution and the commencement of the study about creation of a community choice energy entity as a great step in the direction of our forming a new sustainable Northampton plan. There are other people who are here in support, but not everyone wants to talk. So I'm now going to ask that people that are here in support, please stand up. Is that okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to not just stand, but in fact, to come up and talk, please?
Hi, my name is Sarah Partan. I live at 51 Summer Street in Ward 1. And I am a faculty member at Hampshire College where I teach on climate change and other issues. And I also am a volunteer for Mothers Out Front, which is a group that, of parents that is banding together to try and protect the environment for our children. And I'm a mother. I have a nine-year-old. And I really want her to be able to grow up in a semi-normal life as far as our human condition on this planet. And the climate is changing really quickly, faster than any climate models predict of the climate scientists that we've got, the best climate scientists we have. And I just urge you to do something about it and to do as much as you can about it because this is the time, we've got to do something now. This is, this is the time to do it. Thank you so much for taking this resolution up.
And thank you. Is there anyone else who could provide public comment this evening before we start? If not, then we will convene, and I'd ask the role of the City Council, please.
Counselor Bidwell.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor Nash.
Here.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Here.
Counselor Shara.
Here.
Thank you very much. We are convened. Let me first announce a public hearing about a petition to install an underground conduit at 23 Atwood Drive. This is in accordance with the provisions of Section 22, Chapter 166 of General Laws. A public hearing will be held on February 1st, 2018, at 7:05 in the City Council chambers here at 212 Main Street in Northampton, on the petition of National Grid to install underground facilities under a public way on Atwood Drive. So that is our next City Council meeting on February 1st, when we will hold that hearing. Let's go first to recognitions and one-minute announcements from members of the council, if there are any. Counselor Nash?
I have two. First of all, that in next month, on Thursday evenings, the Police Department will be running Citizen Police Academy. And while it conflicts with my two Thursdays a month, the other nights I'm planning to attend, and that I've heard it's a great program and that it's free, and if you're interested in finding out more about our Police Department, this is a great, I think Maureen did it, didn't you?
I did too.
No, I didn't do it.
So, anyway, so that's starting in February. The other thing is, next Tuesday, the 23rd, at 11:00 a.m. at Historic Northampton, Forester and Oxen Driver Tom Jenkins of Blue Dog Forestry will bring his oxen, Rockin' Star, to Historic Northampton for an outdoor demonstration of oxen logging. After the 45-minute presentation, Rockin' Star will drag logs from Historic Northampton down Bridge Street to 33 Holly Street. Everyone is invited to join the parade and follow the oxen down the street. For more than a century, a lumberyard operated at Holly, at the Holly Street site, now the Northampton Arts Trust, and that's the reason for ending the parade there. So anyway, I know it's in the middle of the day, but if you can make it, that would be kind of fun.
Thank you. Although, I'm disappointed that in your new role as a member of the Transportation and Parking Commission, you didn't relay the joke you told me, which is you're going to work on establishing oxen lanes throughout the city.
I, I, I'm looking forward to it.
Think about it. Okay. Are there other announcements? Counselor Shara?
On Friday, February 2nd, at 7:30 a.m., there is the 2018 Library Legislative Breakfast, which is for our State Senate District, it's held at libraries all around in that district. This year, it's here in Forbes Library. So that's at 7:30 on Friday, February 2nd. State funding for libraries and for interlibrary resources has been consistently dropping for years, and that shifts the burden onto municipalities. As we well know, the city covers the vast majority of Forbes budget, and anything we can do to lobby for more state aid for libraries will benefit all of us in many ways. So come out, 7:30, February 2nd, and talk to the legislators that'll be there and lobby for more library funding.
Thank you. Are there other one-minute announcements? Counselor Bidwell?
Another February announcement. On Monday, February 5th, the Senate Task Force on Strengthening Massachusetts Local Retailers will be holding a public hearing at Union Station at 10:30 on that Monday. And this is, this is a task force set up by the, by the legislature to hear testimony around the, around the state on the challenges and the opportunities facing local retail. And this public hearing will be co-hosted by Northampton's own Judy Harrell, who's a member of that task force. So it's an opportunity to listen, learn, comment on the state of retail here in Northampton.
Thank you. Other announcements? I'll just mention two. It's Saturday, isn't it? Saturday 11, the Pioneer Valley Women's March, the second annual event. I'll be participating. I know a number of counselors will be, and I invite members of the public to also participate. It starts at Sheldon Field at 11 o'clock, I believe. I would like to announce a community meeting that I am going to be doing. This will be Wednesday, January 31st, at 6 o'clock, in the hearing room in City Hall. The purpose is just to kind of have an open Town Hall-style meeting, now that we're starting a new term in the, in the City Council, to hear from members of the public about what they think should be priorities for the next two years and discuss some of the issues that may come up in the City Council and have kind of an open Q and A. So if you've got nothing else to do and you want to have a Q and A with me, you can do that on Wednesday, January 31st, at 6 o'clock. And so if there's no other one-minute announcements, I'll announce our committee assignments. And I think that members of the council received and I assume read the letter that was publicly posted in the agenda on Tuesday, but I'll explain it partly for the benefit of the public. Every two years, the council president makes various appointments to council committees and then makes formal recommendations to the mayor for his appointment to a couple of mayoral bodies. And I'd just like to explain to the council some of my thinking about this. I gave it a lot of thought, and I tried to come up with a framework to make some good decisions about this. And I came up with six principles that I tried to accomplish with these appointments. And I'll just run through them if you don't mind. The first principle is a pretty straightforward one, which is counselors should get their preferences whenever possible. And this is just to make sure that counselor, counselors are enthusiastic about the committee work that they'll be doing. Some statistics on that, counselors submitted rankings for their preferences. 100% of counselors receive their first choice preferences. 75% of counselors receive their first and second choices. About two-thirds received their first choice and then either their second or third, and half of the council received their first, second, and third. So I hope that most people got the preferences that they were enthusiastic about. Another principle in these assignments is I think that every City Council committee should have a gender balance. This has not always been the case in the city. I don't think it's something that has ever been intentional, when it has not been the case, and sometimes it has and sometimes it hasn't, but that was an important factor that I tried to achieve. And the organization that I set forth does achieve that. Third, the quarums between our committees shouldn't overlap. So that means if we have two committees of four people, I tried to avoid having the same three people on, on two committees because then the committees would be too similar. And you would also perhaps run into strange kind of open-meeting law quorum issues. So I tried to avoid that. I also wanted to make sure, and a similar thing is, I wanted to ensure that any two counselors on any council committee could talk to me as council president and receive support and, and help if they wanted it on whatever they're working on in the committees without triggering an open-meeting law conflict. I considered the experience that many counselors bring to committees. Some counselors have been on committees for quite a while and bring lots of experience. And I thought that was important, but I also thought it was important to develop and build new experience for other counselors. And finally, we often think about this process as something that's just for us, and it's largely for us, but it's also important to remember that this is something for the public as well. So I tried to put forth an organization that I think allows us to legislate effectively in the public interest. So, this is my, my, those are my rules of thumb, and with that in mind, I appointed the following counselors to the following committees. To the Committee on Legislative Matters, counselors Dwight, Klein, Murphy, and Carney. To the Committee on Finance, counselors Murphy, Shara, Carney, and Labarge. To the Committee on Community Resources, Counselors Shara, Bidwell, Klein, and Nash. To the Committee on City Services, counselors Carney, Labarge, Bidwell, and Nash. And I made the recommendations to the following multiple-member bodies as follows. To the Energy and Sustainability Commission, counselors Dwight and Klein. To the Disability Commission, Counselor Labarge. And to the Transportation and Parking Commission, counselors Nash and Shara. Just a couple of other points. You'll notice I did not appoint counselors to the Public Works and Utilities Commission, and I proposed a rule change that I expect the council will debate. The Public Works and Utilities Commission was a successor to a previous body that dealt with public works. That before our charter change and reorganization of government and kind of a clearer definition of separation of powers, used to actually have DPW staff as part of the committee. And it no longer does, and we've had this other committee for the past two years that has tried to fill the gap. Unfortunately, the committee has met not as often as I think it should. It's met three or four times a year. As of today, it hasn't met for 297 days. So I'd like to explore a better way for the council to deal with this jurisdiction and these issues, and that will be up for debate at a later time. So please organize an initial meeting as soon as you can. As you know, scheduling is not subject to the open-meeting law, so you can talk amongst yourselves about scheduling after we adjourn, as long as you don't talk about substantive issues. I request that you elect both a chair, a chair and vice chair. In the past, I've seen committees only elect the chair, and then when the chair is not there, there's kind of just an arbitrary decision about who will preside. So I think there should be a vice chair. And the first person who was listed in all the names that I read off will serve as the temporary chair for the purpose of that election. And then finally, please vote on a, a meeting schedule. So those are the committee assignments for the 2018-2019 session. Now we are come to a presentation from our Director of Public Works, Donna Lascalia. This is relative to the Stormwater and Flood Control Utility and what's been going on for fiscal year 2017. And this is required by the ordinance that establishes the committee. So I'd like to invite Director Lascalia to come up, if she's ready, to provide this presentation. And one note, you know, this is, as I understand it, this is a presentation from the director to the council. This is not kind of an open discussion about stormwater and all its aspects. I think that's an important thing to point out. So turn the floor over to Director Lascalia.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. This is the Stormwater and Flood Control Utility presentation for FY17. I just have to figure out how to use this. So left-click?
Left-click. If not, I can certainly move it from here.
Okay, I need to go back. So we need to go back one slide. There we go. Okay, thank you. Okay, so the Stormwater and Flood Control Utility was established on March 20th, 2014, so we have three full fiscal years of operations behind us now. So I'm, I'm going to talk a little bit about financials for FY17, but mostly, I'm going to focus on the projects that we've been able to complete using the resources available to us through the utility. So this slide shows the FY17 revenues totaling a little more than $1.9 million, which were in line with our expectations. And this slide shows our expenditures, broken down into several categories here. PS is Personnel. OM is Operations and Maintenance. OOM, Other Than Ordinary Maintenance, also referred to as Capital. We have Debt Service, and we also have Indrex. Total's a little more than $1.2 million, so I'll just call your attention to the, the difference between the revenue collected and our expenditures, and the difference is money that we have encumbered for projects that span fiscal year. So a lot of time when we do construction projects, it's a timing issue, and you know, we, we are spanning the summer construction season, so that's why you're seeing that difference between revenue and expenditures. And this slide is just showing the three full fiscal years of operation and kind of a side-by-side comparison for revenue and expenditures, and, and they're mostly consistent. And just a few words about credits. So our billing for FY17 included more than 11,000 properties citywide, and we issued credits to more than 1,000 properties for a total value of $76,503. So credits can, can be issued for many reasons, small residential, wind gardens, protected land, and also need-based credits, among others. So in FY17, we paid salaries for the equivalent of 9.78 full-time positions out of this utility. This is everything from the folks who drive the street sweeper, to a portion of my salary, to the financial administrator, to engineering staff. What you will notice is in FY18, we did do a little reorganization within the department after I became director, and that number's down to a little more than six, the equivalent of six full-time positions, and you'll see something similar to that for FY19. And this slide, very similar to last year's presentation, just talks about Indrex, which I think is a concept everyone's familiar with. So employee benefits need to be accounted for, you know, health insurance and workers' compensation, retirement, and so on. So this is a charge back to the utility for those benefits. Why are we doing what we're doing relative to this utility? And the answer is, the EPA is the regulatory authority that oversees the, our stormwater system, and they issue us what's called an MS4 permit. And we are anticipating the issuance of a new permit on July 1st, 2018. And we will need to communicate with EPA by the end of the fall and acknowledge that we are covered under this permit and that we will meet its requirements. And then in mid-2019, we will need to have a more comprehensive plan about how we are going to come into compliance with this permit. So what's in the permit? It's got six major sections. They're there. I won't read them, but I will note that we have already taken measures through the utility to be in sort of what I would call compliance already. You know, we always have to upgrade our operations, but we have done a lot of work to put ourselves in a really good position to, to be in compliance. And, and just a, a couple of high points, illicit discharge detection and elimination. So this would be a situation where we have a sewer connected to a storm drain. So anytime we find a situation like this, obviously sewage needs to go to the, to the wastewater treatment plant to be treated before it's discharged. So if we find a situation like that, we need to address it immediately. So you know, our department works with whoever the property owner is to address that situation. And we have, you know, an ordinance that assists us with the administration of this. So a few words about operations and maintenance. So I always think it's helpful to have a map just to kind of show the, the scale of the operation. So catch basins and intakes, this is where the water flows to. And here they are, more than 5,000, all over the city. And every one of these needs to be maintained, and this is how we maintain them. You have a catch basin cleaner. You can see on the left-hand slide, it's got sort of like this clamshell attachment, and the catch basin becomes filled with debris. So we have to travel to the catch basins and scoop the debris out. Goes into that body and, and we dump it. I will mention this is a 2005 truck. We were able to replace the body, which had, which had completely rusted out with a stainless steel one for a little under $20,000, allows us to get more time out of the truck. And maybe some of you have seen these labels around town. We want to encourage people to not dump things like oil down the catch basin or things that... that don't belong in a river. So this is just a friendly reminder for people that this is actually flowing directly to the river without any sort of treatment. And this is also part of our permit, too. This is part of permit compliance, is we need to educate the public about what is this thing and where does it go. And this is an example of how we do that sort of public communication. So more infrastructure maps, manholes, more than 2,500 all throughout the city. Each, it's kind of hard to see, but each one of those is a dot if you look really closely. So what needs to happen to each one of these? They need to be maintained, you know, they get displaced, or they break, or you know, get hit by a snowplow, or whatever. So this is something that we do with our in-house labor. See, there's quite a bit of work that goes into it. Street sweeping. So this is part of keeping debris out of the catch basin, sort of preemptive, you know, we don't want leaves and branches and trash in the streets. Not only is it unsightly, it causes flow problems. So we sweep all the streets by ward annually, as everyone knows, and then monthly sweeping in Florin Center and sort of in the downtown corridor. We also sweep special events, you know, the holiday stroll, the summer stroll, to clean up after those. So we also have known trouble spots throughout the city that flood, kind of areas that are just on our list that we need to keep an eye on. So these are regularly patrolled. I've just kind of highlighted them here for your information, they're kind of all over the place. So again, it's a kind of a personnel and a time thing, but you know, King Street, Church Street, Federal Street, Nanituck Street, Ryan Road, Prospect Street, so there's a lot of places that are firmly on our radar that we know we have to keep an eye on. Storm event flood mitigation, so this is a very timely slide. We think about the weather that we've had over the past couple of weeks, you know, really, really cold, and then snow, and then heavy rain, and really, really warm. So you look at that picture on the left-hand side, instead of, you know, branches and leaves there, think about ice. So that's what we've been chasing for the last week and a half, is ice on these grates. And you know, if we don't remove it, the water has nowhere to go. So this is kind of the regular maintenance that we have to do, and it's really year-round, we have to do it because the rain never stops. So what you're seeing are pictures, the picture on the right-hand side is actually down at the wastewater treatment plant at the flood control station, and that's an area we have to keep an eye on, too, because if we have debris that starts backing up into the flood control station, that wreaks havoc with our pumps. Drain ditches. Ditches are sometimes referred to as country drainage, because it's not necessarily as defined of a system as say, like a pipe system, but it still requires maintenance because it overgrows, or gets clogged with trash, or whatever. So it's still something that we have to pay attention to. We have more than six miles of these designated in red, kind of all over the city. Here's one of our trouble spots, King Street Brook. This is something we pay attention to daily, weekly, and annually in a variety of ways, but we go in there every year and remove debris from the channel between Barrett Street and the culvert behind CBS. We can't allow debris to back up against that grate, which you see on the second slide More infrastructure culverts, more than 200. These are the channels that pass underneath the roadway. If they were to fail, the roadway dropped right into them, so very important for us to be maintaining. Stormwater system inspections. So this is sort of an interesting part of what we do at the DPW. We have, we refer to it as the camera van, and you see it down in the bottom middle slide. And it's actually a shared resource between the sewer and the stormwater enterprise. And if you look at the slide in the top right-hand corner, or the picture in the top right-hand corner of that slide, that's the camera. We open a manhole, and we drop that camera down into the system. And that thing runs through the system, and we can see, what you're seeing in the second picture over is actually a picture inside the Market Street Brook. And so we can see, you know, is there a breach somewhere, is there debris in the way that's impeding water? This is how we find a lot of our problems and then fix them, but these investigations are absolutely integral to what we do, because this is providing us information we otherwise wouldn't have access to. You'd be like digging a hole to find your problem. So this is, we were using a camera van from 1982, and so we have the pleasure of a new truck now. Again, a shared resource between sewer and stormwater. Costs almost $300,000, but well worth it. So speaking of pipes, we have more than 120 miles of stormwater pipes throughout the And here's a few photos of our personnel, just kind of what sort of repairs are we able to do in-house versus what we have to hire a contractor for. We are able to, a lot of this infrastructure is buried at depths that we can't reach with our equipment. So anything more than, you know, 10 feet starts to become a little bit tricky for us to get to. But just, I wanted to just include a few photos of some of the in-house repairs that we are able to do, if it's not at too great of a depth for us to reach. Outfalls, more than 400. Definition of an outfall is a point where the municipal stormwater discharges to a waterway of the United States. So this goes back to the MS4 permit, and we need to make certain that we don't have any sort of illicit discharges going into our waterways, like, you know, sewage or chemicals. And oftentimes, that happens. So we need to know where these are, we need to be able to monitor and test them, and make sure that there's only water flowing out of them. And here's a photo of an outfall, for a reference. Another part of our, of the operation that's funded by this utility is stormwater management for new developments and redevelopments. Anytime there's a project that disturbs more than one acre in the city, stormwater management permit is required, and we have dedicated staff who work with contractors and developers in town to make sure that they're in compliance with these requirements. You're seeing some pictures of West Hampton Road, TJDL Development, and Olander Drive for ServiceNet.
Isn't that the lumberyard on the lower right?
Lower right is infiltration galleys, and that's related to ServiceNet. So switching gears for a minute, this is our flood control system, and I have two slides here. This is the Mill River portion, just to give you an idea of the scope of the levee system and associated pump stations. In particular, the 1,000 linear feet of the levee, and this is important for vegetation management, which I'll speak to a little bit more in a moment. And this is the Connecticut River portion, and you can see 4,800 linear feet. So now we get to vegetation maintenance. Levees have to be maintained, this falls under the jurisdiction of the Army Corps of Engineers, so they have particular standards that they hold us to. They were the folks who built this system for us, and we have to maintain it to their liking. So one of the things we have to be very cognizant of is vegetation control, because if we have large trees growing into the side of the levee, it can undermine those levees. So we have to be very careful to strictly maintain this. A lot of the mowing we do is done in-house, a lot of vegetation control we do is done in-house. Some of it has to be contracted out, because it's in areas that aren't accessible. And we completed a project a couple of years back to do some restoration with an outside contractor. And that's actually what the debt service that you saw in the expense slide was from. Pump station, so this is the pump station down at Hockenham Road, adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant, and maybe some of you are familiar with the old pumps that are inside of it. So our staff does kind of regular maintenance on these, you know, changes the oil, spark plugs, that sort of thing. We've also put some money into the fuel storage tanks, and that's what you're seeing on the right-hand side, diesel and gas. We gotta make some improvements to commit to environmental compliance. And these are some photos of the old Springfield Road-Oxbow Bridge. We had to do short-term stabilization here. You can see the top photo, that footing had sort of shifted and was being undermined. So this was an in-house repair that we did to stabilize this bridge. This is an ancillary structure to the flood control system. We're also taking a look at the city's emergency flood plan and making some updates to that. We're also taking a look at some of the penetrations of the levees that are done by our utilities and third-party utilities. So it's kind of a overall assessment of what is the flood control system, and just updating the material that we have and making sure that our operations are solid in the event that we need to deploy stoplog structures and the like. So I'll speak a little bit to kind of some large-scale repairs that we've done in FY17. Here's a map, just sort of showing, you know, where these improvements have been all over the city. I'll speak a little bit, just kind of project by project here briefly. North Farms Road, we did a pretty significant project here over the summer to replace the water line. As part of that, we did some stormwater work totaling about $100,000. It was an eight-inch drainpipe and a stone culvert. When we do large-scale roadway reconstruction, we try to bundle utilities for efficiency purposes, and you will see that in a lot of these slides. Woodlawn Avenue, this is an example of something that we were able to do in-house. This is like a before-and-after photo, so the bottom middle is before, and the top left and right is after. And same thing, Belmont Ave., we have some very talented folks who work for us, so you know, you only see kind of what's on the top of the street and don't necessarily pay attention to what's below it. So the purpose of these photos is to just give you an idea of what you're actually driving on top of, or what you're seeing when you see that grate. Day Avenue, this was another significant project that we undertook over the summer. This was more than a million-dollar project, stormwater more than $100,000 here. We replaced the pipe going right down the middle of the road. This is Woodmont Road, and this actually ties into the next slide, which I'll get to in a moment, which ties into the new underpass for the bike path. And that's kind of a known trouble spot for us, known flooding. So we've been working with Mass DOT to basically make improvements to that entire system. So this was a little excavation that we did on Woodmont Road, and then if you look at this photo, this was actually funded by Mass DOT as part of that underpass project. This is behind DA Sullivan, and we had a very old drainpipe here that had heaved out of the ground and was contributing to some flooding problems. So this work is complete, and we're seeing some relief. Wilson Avenue, interesting story here. This started as street flooding that was called in by the residents. And we did some investigation and determined that we needed to install a catch basin, and we did, spliced into the existing system. This work took place at a depth of 12 feet. We had to call upon our contractor, who we use for situations like this. And that's a photo of their work. Glasky Park, everyone's familiar with this. So there was some drainage work associated with Phase 2 as there was with Phase 1. The biggest thing of note here was we did have sewer and stormwater infrastructure combined here before we separated it. So we actually had stormwater flowing to the wastewater treatment plant. So that's not a good thing, because that contributes to flow, and we're treating water that we don't actually need to be treated, that needs to be treated, and there's an expense associated with that. So that is kind of a highlight of Phase 2. And Hankley Street, this is a big one, so this is a nearly $3 million project, and what you're seeing there is 30- and 36-inch drainpipes. That's about as big as it gets in the city. Nutting Avenue, we had our TV camera van doing some inspections, and we determined to break in the pipe, and we retained the services again of our contractor. This was at a depth of 13 feet. This was about $75,000 project here. And this is an example of one of our, one of the folks who works for the sewer Stormwater Division. He actually built that on Penn Castle Drive. So again, we do, we do as much as we can in-house, you know, because there's obviously a cost savings associated with that. So that's an example of the sort of work we're able to do in-house. Riverside Drive, this was part of a project to repair a sewer leak, and while we were repairing the sewer leak, we discovered a broken drainpipe. So the picture's kind of dark on the bottom left of your screen there, but this was in a very difficult spot. You can kind of see in the photo in the top left there. So again, we had our contractor do that for us. Ryan Road, we repaved Ryan Road last summer. Before we were able to repave it, we had to address some drainage problems. You know, drainage is the enemy of good pavement, and it can definitely, you know, undermine new work. So we wanted to make sure that we addressed existing drainage issues there before we paved the road, and so these are a couple of photos of that work. Pipe and subdrain near Burt's Pit is part of that project. And finally, Audubon Road. This is a million-dollar project. Stormwater piece of this is a quarter million dollars. And what you're seeing in the bottom right there is the new culvert that was installed as part of that project. So to wrap up here, I'll talk a little bit about what our plans are for the coming year and beyond. Hankley Street will continue into next fiscal year, and next calendar year, of course. So we will be doing outfall reconstruction at Riverside Drive. That's gonna start in the spring. We're also looking at drain repairs on Chesterfield Road as part of future roadway reconstruction, and we're looking at 9,064 linear feet of Burt's Pit Road. Survey and assessment of that are already underway. There are drainage improvements that we are going to have to undertake as part of any roadway reconstruction there, so we are currently taking a look at that. And as far as the flood control system goes, we are going to be doing an assessment of the actual pumps at the flood control building on Hockenham Road. We are looking to award that contract probably in March, and we're anticipating about a $175,000 contract for someone to do an assessment of those pumps and sort of operationally which direction we need to go in terms of making improvements to them. We also need to continue to assess the vegetation situation along the levees. You're seeing that, a photo of that on the right-hand side. I mean, this is just sort of a constant upkeep that we have to do, and we're trying to institute some sort of long-range plan to deal with that. And that concludes this year's Stormwater and Flood Control Utility presentation.
Well, we thank you for it. That was excellent, very informative. I think it would be in order if any members of the council wanted to ask kind of clarifying questions that are directly related to the presentation, if the director's willing.
Is it possible, are you gonna be posting this on your page? It'd be good to access it, to be perfectly honest, I couldn't read half of it, so.
But I agree with the council president's summation, but I think it's rather critical the public has expressed in the past some concerns about the, you know, what it is the money is going, that is going, that they're paying for the stormwater. It was actually a central theme of the last mayoral campaign, pretty much. And I think it's important for people to understand that, for instance, this system right here, the last thing we end up on, those pumps that you're describing are old PT boat engines, and they don't make those engines anymore. Parts, you guys are manufacturing parts, and we've always talked about the critical need in order to, you know, if the opportunity for catastrophic failure is pretty... to, you know, if the opportunity for catastrophic failure is pretty high, so we have to reinvest and protect our stormwater management system, particularly at this end where it discharges into the river. So there wasn't any question other than that you're putting this on the site, right?
Yes, we will. And, you know, one of the reasons that we selected the photos that we did was we kind of wanted to show everyone, and we will, we'll post this on the DPW's website, but we wanted to show kind of the very broad range of work we do, you know, that what we're able to accomplish in-house, what we have to hire out, but it really kind of runs the gamut, and that's what we were trying to capture with this presentation. That's why there was, you know, not a lot of words, but a lot of photos, and I think that's, you know, a good way to communicate kind of the scale of the operation.
Council of the Barge.
Donna, how much does it cost for the camera? Because I've seen it, and I've seen them operate it. I'm just wondering, what is the cost of that?
So the camera was wrapped up in the overall cost of the van, which was roughly $284,000. I don't know specifically how much the camera cost. Yeah, it's an amazing piece of machinery, for sure.
I thank you very much for coming in and doing this presentation, and put it up on our website so people can see it.
Thank you for the presentation. I think these are always incredibly important for me as a councilwoman, but I think for everyone in Northampton, to understand the level, the depth of work that goes into maintaining our floodwater, flood and stormwater system. So this is really useful, I appreciate it. But I wanted to ask, too, about how much the DPW is engaged in looking at kind of green infrastructure to accompany, you know, kind of the more traditional infrastructure for flood control, how much, you know, like erosion-resistant planting happens, how much, how much do you recommend kind of drainage swales that can absorb some of the water and all of those kinds of things, and how do you work with other departments in the city that do that kind of green infrastructure envisioning and creation? Because it seems like that, that could really supplement, you know, the kind of stuff that we saw in your presentation.
Yeah, I think you saw that with Pulaski Park, Phase One. I mean, that's a, that's a perfect example of sort of moving in that direction, you know, away from, you know, traditional stormwater management, you know, here's the pipe, here's the catch basin. So, you know, you're seeing that, that kind of moving in a greener direction, you know, with the bio-swell and some of the plantings that we did for Phase One. So I think that, you know, it's firmly on our radar, and given any opportunity, we take it.
Pleasant Street as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
We did, we did the same on Pleasant Street as well, the end of Pleasant Street. It's all rain infiltration system. We're at the intersection of Hockenheim Road, that's all rain area. All those plantings are underground rain areas.
Council Nash, is there a question?
The, with the stormwater pumps, that there's going to be a study for $175,000 to recommend new pumps. They're not just going to come in and say, "Oh, you need new pumps." They, what kind of details did they provide us with those recommendations?
They're going to provide us with alternatives. So it's not going to be just, "You need to replace these." That will likely be one of the alternatives. But what we are asking for is a thorough assessment of the operation, maintenance, and sort of future viability of these pieces of machinery, and we are going to ask whoever has awarded the contract to give us some very viable alternatives for which direction we move.
Other questions?
I would just like to kind of say what you said, but you said it far too humbly, which is that the DPW does a mind-blowing amount of work, and this presentation, even though it's so comprehensive, it's still just a fraction of everything your department does. But I just want to make sure it's clear how much I appreciate everything you do, and I think, I think the council all feels the same way, and it's very helpful to members of the public to have this information, and also just to have a sense of the scale of what you're working with when it comes to stormwater management. So we appreciate that, and thank you for taking the extra time to come here and give an equally comprehensive presentation about your work. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, are there other communications from the mayor?
Yeah, I was just going to quickly follow up and again, thank Director Lascalia for the work that she and her department are doing, and also to say, you know, we're coming up, this will be our, we're in our fiscal year now, fiscal year 18. We're about to cross over into our fifth fiscal year when we develop the FY19 budget of this new utility. And I am going to be, I think Counselor Dwight referenced that there was a lot of conversation about the utility last year, and one of the things that I took away from those conversations was really wanting, we've made some changes to the ordinance over time, mostly to credits, that we've made reforms to the credit policy. And so I'm going to be working with Director Lascalia and the DPW over the next several months to look at potential reforms to the ordinance itself, making some changes to the ordinance itself to try to address some of the issues that we've heard over the first, you know, now four, going on five fiscal years. So I wanted to kind of let the council know that. I think, obviously, we have a capital process, we have a budget process to deal with. This would be in the fall that I would anticipate bringing those forward, but I did want to say, just to follow on to the presentation, that, you know, I think we're trying to get the information out to people, but then there's also just a question about people understanding how their bill works, how it's administered, and so looking at ways to try to address that as well. So we're going to be working on that. So just wanted to follow on with that.
I appreciate that. Council of the Barge, you have a question without getting into the substance of?
Yes, I wonder.
Okay, go right ahead.
Mayor, I'm very happy to hear you present that, and I think quite a bit of my residents will be happy about you doing what you're going to do.
Well, you know, again, similar, you know, a few years ago, we had some questions about our water and sewer rates, and so we spent some time and did sort of a deep dive and looked at them, and so, you know, we have experience now with how it actually has worked, and we're going to do a similar deep dive to see if there's potential changes we could put forth to try to address some of those issues, so.
Yep.
And that's my only communication.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So we'll now go to resolutions.
Point of order.
Counselor. Could I just mention the possibility that the presentation that comes next, following resolutions on Community Choice Energy Plus, would it be possible to put that before we actually take up the matter of the resolution on, I think it would inform our conversation.
I'll tell you what I was going to recommend is I would like to put the resolution on the floor and then recognize our presenter to speak during that item. I think that'd be the most effective way. So why don't we do that, since I also feel like most people are here for that? This is R18003. This is a resolution of the City Council of Northampton's Board of 100% Renewable Energy. Comes upon the recommendation of Counselor Elisa F. Klein, Counselor William H. Dwight, Northampton Mayor's Youth Commission, and the Energy and Sustainability Commission. The resolution is quite lengthy, so I'm going to read it, so be prepared, and then we can have a motion to get it on the floor. Whereas too much of our energy in the state of Massachusetts and the city of Northampton comes from fossil fuels that pollute our air and water and damage our climate, and whereas Massachusetts communities are already experiencing the impacts of global warming through environmental phenomena such as rising sea levels, unprecedentedly severe storms, temperature extremes, and elevated particulate matter and smog pollution, and public health dangers such as an increase in pollution-related asthma and cardiovascular disease. And whereas a goal of 100% renewable clean energy will contribute to the mitigation of climate change, improve our city's air and water quality, and protect the health of our community's children, adults, and families. And whereas the city of Northampton is already a proven leader in actively reducing carbon emissions and promoting clean energy by first developing and implementing the Sustainable Northampton Master Plan, constructing a large municipal solar array on a capped landfill, installing solar panels on several city-owned buildings, and promoting a successful solarized Northampton program, conducting the Heat Smart Northampton Initiative to encourage residents and businesses to install cold climate air-source heat pumps, developing and expanding bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure throughout the city, implementing energy efficiency upgrades in municipal buildings and streetlights, requiring new or renovated city buildings to meet LED standards, purchasing electric vehicles, and installing public charging stations on city property. Mayor David J. Narcois signing on to the Global Covenant of Mayors for Climate and Energy, committing the city to reducing greenhouse gas emissions and enhancing resilience to climate change, and signing on to the Climate Mayor's Agreement to adopt and uphold the climate change mitigation goals enshrined in the Paris Agreement, despite President Donald Trump's withdrawal of the United States from the agreement. And finally, the City Council passing unanimously in April 20th, 2017, a resolution calling on the Massachusetts Legislature to establish carbon pollution pricing to curb climate change. And whereas the transition to 100% renewable energy will promote employment opportunities and economic growth in Massachusetts and Northampton, facilitate local control and ownership over energy options, and bring tangible benefits to low-income residents and others who have been historically disadvantaged by fossil-fuel-based energy systems. And whereas the state of Massachusetts and the city of Northampton can get 100% of our energy from clean renewable sources by harnessing our abundant solar and wind resources, and taking advantage of innovations in energy efficiency, green transportation, energy storage, and other technologies. And whereas Northampton, whereas S. Northampton revises its Sustainable Northampton Plan for the next 10 years, it is incumbent upon us to continue our environmental leadership throughout the state and the United States by adopting an ambitious and comprehensive plan to phase out the use of fossil fuels, transition to renewable energy, and incorporate many principles consistent with the concepts outlined herein. And whereas S. 1849, an act transitioning Massachusetts to 100% renewable energy, and H. 3395 of the same name, currently being considered in the Massachusetts State Legislature, call for the transition of the Commonwealth to, quote, "100% clean renewable energy by 2050" in order to first avoid pollution of our air, water, and land, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and ultimately eliminate our use of fossil fuels and other polluting and dangerous forms of energy; two, increase energy security by reducing our reliance on imported sources of energy and maximizing renewable energy production in Massachusetts and in our region; three, increase economic development by stimulating public and private investments in clean energy and energy efficiency projects; four, create local jobs by harnessing Massachusetts' skilled workforce, business leadership, and academic institutions to advance new technologies, improve the energy performance of homes and workplaces, and deploy renewable energy across the Commonwealth; and five, improve the quality of life and economic well-being of all Massachusetts residents, with an emphasis on communities and populations that have been disproportionately affected by pollution and high costs under our energy system. Now, therefore be resolved that the City Council of Northampton, Massachusetts supports rapid attainment of a goal of 100% clean renewable energy for the state of Massachusetts and the city of Northampton. Be it further resolved that the City Council, excuse me, that the city of Northampton should consider all municipal decisions in light of whether or not they will bring the city and its residents, businesses, and institutions closer to 100% renewable energy, and will avoid taking actions that could increase the use of fossil fuels or delay the transition to 100% renewable energy. Be it further resolved that the city of Northampton should strive to continue to take actions that promote clean energy and reduce fossil fuel use, including continued energy efficiency upgrades in municipal buildings, continued promotion of energy efficiency upgrades in private homes and businesses, consideration of the use of municipal electricity aggregation, also known as Community Choice Aggregation, or CCA, also known as Community Choice Energy, or CCE, jointly with other nearby municipalities pursuing General Laws, Chapter 164, Section 134, to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, stabilize our electricity rates, and add resiliency to our electric grid through the development of a comprehensive energy plan to reduce our energy consumption, develop local renewable energy generation, and exceed the renewable portfolio standard requirement for Class 1 RECs in our energy supply. Almost there. Be it further resolved that the City Council of Northampton, Massachusetts supports the aforementioned state legislation, applauds Representative Peter V. Coquart for signing on as a petitioner to the House bill, and urges the Massachusetts Senate, House of Representatives, and Governor of the Commonwealth to adopt in a timely manner these or other similar bills that will bring Massachusetts in line with 100% renewable future. And the final resolve asks that this be sent essentially to our federal and state representatives, including those on the key joint committee. So I might waive that reading of that section if that's, if there's no objection to that. So that is the resolution. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved?
Second.
And seconded. I'd first like to recognize, and ask for a motion to recognize Mr. Sam Tittleman, who is here to make a presentation on part of it.
Second.
Made by Counselor Klein, seconded by Counselor Bidwell. Mr. Tittleman, please come up. First, I'd ask if the sponsors wish to introduce the resolution or if they would ask Mr. Tittleman to start.
Well, what Sam's going to be speaking to is one significant bullet point, but a bullet point on this, on the whole document, but...
So maybe it makes sense for one of the sponsors to give an overall introduction?
Well, I just realized as I was saying that, what I was stepping up for, yeah.
So go right ahead, Counselor Dwight.
And by the way, we, I think we did move to recognize Sam, but we didn't vote on it.
Oh, absolutely right. So all those in favor of recognizing?
Ayes.
Aye.
And feel free, if you want to sit down while others are talking, you're really having to do that.
And while you're setting up your presentation, essentially.
Yeah, yeah, but you're recognized if you want to get up at any point. So Counselor Dwight, please.
You know, and again, as we've often said, the resolutions are aspirational documents. It's basically, in this instance, it's an appeal to the state legislature, and we're not alone in this, as has been noted, but an appeal to the legislature to move on legislation that will set realistic achievable goals that will actually get us off of a dependency, an addiction, if you will, to fossil fuels and all the consequences thereof. And in fact, actually, the stormwater system that we spoke of has, has not, it's fairly direct corollary, cause and effect. And the, as you noted, this is a very lengthy document, a lengthy resolution, but contained in it essentially, as I said, is the appeal and the desire to set the goals here in the community, to adjust our priorities, to move away and transition towards a renewable energy, a sustainable renewable energy sources for this community and this state, and hopefully thereby creating an example that would be followed by other communities in the state, but also communities throughout the country. And this is, of course, as noted in this, what prompted the somewhat, the more urgent trend of this, it was the president's abdication, if you will, from, or removing our national commitment, making us the outlier towards trying to reduce all the things that contribute to global, the global warming, aka climate change, and all the consequences therein. And in fact, actually, has run in the other direction, expanded drilling, offshore drilling, with the possible exception of Florida, I guess the two you know, but certainly off the coast of Massachusetts, it has other environmental impacts beyond the consumption of it. It's actually, the acquiring of these fossil fuels also have dilatory impact. And one of the things Sam is going to speak with is one of the ways by which we can move towards those goals, and in fact, actually, he will explain, I think, a lot more eloquently than I can, about how Massachusetts actually was the initiator and the leader in this, in the legislation that allows for this. And I've just come from Sonoma County and Napa Valley, where they took our lead and ran with it, and I think maybe, maybe you'll be talking about that, too, so I'll get out of your way.
You're not in my way. Thank you, Counselors Dwight.
Also, oh, sorry, Mr. Tittle. As the other sponsor, do you want to provide another introduction before we go to our presenter?
I don't need to provide an introduction. I have some comments that I'll make after.
Okay, so the floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor O'Donnell, and thank you, Counselors Dwight and Klein, and thank you to the Mayor's Youth Commission and the Energy and Sustainability Commission. and thank you to the Mayor's Youth Commission and the Energy and Sustainability Commission for co-sponsoring this resolution and for your input and support, and thank you to the entire council for your time and consideration this evening. This resolution reflects our deep concern about climate change and our belief that local government action is necessary to help address this mighty challenge. The resolution recognizes the important sustainability efforts that Northampton has already made and the achievements that has already realized, and seeks to build upon them by expressing support for a statewide 100% renewables bill, and by stating that Northampton should consider its municipal decisions in light of the need to move the city and its residents, businesses, and institutions towards 100% renewable energy. To that effect, the resolution contains language asking Northampton to study and consider the concept of community choice energy, and in particular, a joint community choice energy entity that in Northampton's discretion, we hope, would include Northampton and Pelham, both of which have already expressed interest as well. I'm sorry, Amherst and Pelham, thank you. And I'd like to tell you a little bit more about the exciting possibility of community choice energy. Massachusetts law enables individual and joint cities and towns, or cities and towns, to form individual and joint municipal electric aggregations. This is commonly referred to as community choice energy, or CCE. Under the law, CCEs can perform two primary functions. The first is to collectively purchase electric power in bulk from competitive suppliers on behalf of the electricity consumers within the CCE's borders. These consumers can include residents, businesses, and other institutions, including our municipalities. And this electricity procurement action can include purchasing an electric supply that contains a greater percentage of renewable energy than what is required under Massachusetts Sorry. The second primary, trying to get the hang of the mouse, the second primary function that CCEs can perform under the law is to adopt an energy plan to implement energy efficiency, conservation, and renewable energy programs, phasing in these programs over time to steadily reduce the community's electricity consumption and to displace fossil-fuel-generated electric power supply with local renewable energy generation. We call CCEs, we call CCEs that perform both of these functions enumerated under the law a CCE plus. Here is a depiction of the relationship between the CCE plus, the utility, and the consumer. The CCE plus collectively buys the competitive electric power and eventually generates local renewable power on behalf of its consumers. The incumbent utility, which in the case of Northampton is National Grid, continues to perform the same functions that it does now. It owns and operates the centralized electric grid, delivers the power that the CCE purchases on behalf of its consumers, and provides those consumers with consolidated billing and customer services. The charge that this CCE consumers pay for their electric consumption shows up as a line item on their National Grid utility bill, and National Grid transfers that payment to the CCE. CCE plus could benefit Northampton and other participating municipalities in many ways. For example, the CCE plus energy plan could analyze local community energy use data to implement energy efficiency and renewable energy programs that are strategically tailored to maximize reductions in electricity consumption and greenhouse gas emissions, and to do so in ways that stabilize and reduce long-term electricity rates. This energy plan could fit well within the framework of the comprehensive climate resiliency and mitigation plans that Northampton is currently working to adopt as part of the updating of its Sustainable Northampton Plan. The CCE plus could essentially function like an energy office that helps its participating municipalities to develop, implement, and track their sustainability programs and projects, and to coordinate intermunicipal efforts as appropriate. CCE plus can act as a vehicle for promoting value-adding energy services to its consumers, and it can make energy efficiency and the benefits of energy efficiencies and renewables more available and affordable to all participating community members. By using local service providers and resources to implement energy efficiency and renewable energy programs, the CCE plus can support and create local jobs and make investments and other expenditures in our local economies, so there are lots of potential economic benefits. How the enrollment works. Under the law, all electricity consumers within a CCE's borders are automatically enrolled in the CCE if either they receive the utility's electric power supply at the time the CCE is formed, or if they are a new electricity consumer after the CCE is formed. All consumers receive advance notice of the CCE enrollment and are free to opt out before and after the CCE begins its operations. With automatic enrollment, national opt-out rates range from 3% to 5%, which means that a high percentage of the community typically participates in the CCE, and this is a strategic advantage of creating one. How do we pay for a CCE plus? Once operational, CCE plus is revenue-based. The electricity rates and fees that consumers would otherwise pay to the utility are bundled and redirected to support the CCE plus, including an administrative fee that covers operating costs. There are, there are initial startup costs to hire a consultant for the first year or so, we estimate, and these, these funds could come from grants, municipal appropriations, or a combination of the two, or elsewhere. A success, an example of a successful joint CCE plus in Massachusetts is the Cape Light Compact. Established in 1997, the compact is operated by 21 member towns on Cape Cod and Martha's Vineyard, serving approximately 200,000 consumers. 100% of the compact's competitive electric supply is matched with renewable energy credits. It has also helped develop 28.5 megawatts of local solar PV generation, and it offers grants for low-income solar PV ownership. Sorry. The compact focuses heavily on administering energy efficiency programs, and these programs have created $635 million in lifetime consumer benefits to date. Next steps. In its most recent fall town meeting, Amherst approved a resolution with language very similar to the one before you, aspiring to reach 100% renewable energy at both the town and state level, and to explore the possibility of the joint CCE plus concept with neighboring communities like Massa, like Northampton and Pelham. We hope you will pass this resolution, and that the City Council, that the Northampton City Government will then take next steps to form an intermunicipal working group to further explore this possibility. Once the municipalities have adequately explored the concept of CCE plus, we hope the City Council will consider authorizing Northampton to develop a joint CCE plus plan in cooperation with Amherst and Pelham, according to the findings of the study. And if it does so, that final plan would then need the approval of both the community and the state Department of Public Utilities. Residents of Northampton, Amherst, Pelham, and other surrounding communities have formed Western Mass Community Choice Energy to explore this concept, and we are committed to further supporting Northampton, Amherst, and Pelham in your efforts to explore this concept further. And I would just like to briefly acknowledge the enormous contributions of all the other community members, and in particular, Del Franks, who couldn't be here tonight, who have made this resolution possible. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, thank you very much. Is there a discussion in the council on this issue? Counselor Nash?
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Just real quick, you mentioned startup costs for that initial, what, what do you see that cost being approximately?
It's a good question. It really depends on the form that the endeavor ends up taking, how we want, how the communities would like to structure their joint CCE plus, and what initial steps would be taken, and who would do that work. So it's, I could throw out a ballpark number, but in some ways, that might be unfair to the process.
Are we talking millions?
No, no.
Okay.
I mean, you know...
You don't want to do it, are you?
I shouldn't, I mean, I don't know if it's helpful to...
Any other, any other questions?
Well, just a response to that, it's my understanding that there's someone at UMass who oversees their sustainability programming that would be interested in kind of pitching into the consulting efforts and things, so there are ways to kind of piece things together so that it's not an exorbitant cost to the city, or to the whole group. Yeah?
And to be, to be clear, what we're talking about today is basically an expression of interest in this concept, and that's what the other communities have done.
That's correct.
Basically, okay. So we had questions, Counselor Bidwell, the Counselor...
Yeah, thanks, thanks very much, very, very good presentation. Is part of the initial phase of some sort of feasibility study, for lack of better words, just what the local generation capacity really is from, from renewables?
Yes, yeah, that's certainly one, one direction to go in, where the communities engage in a feasibility study before any further steps are taken to authorize plan development and to actually implement an operating CCE plus.
Okay, Counselor...
And I'm kind of spiritually very much into the 100% renewable. My questions have always been economic ones, because heretofore, green energy has been more expensive. And I noticed in one of the whereses, we say that it will bring tangible benefits to low-income residents and others who have been historically disadvantaged by fossil-fuel-based energy systems. And, and this might be more for the sponsors. Can you tell me how low-income residents have been historically disadvantaged by fossil-fuel-based systems? And given that renewable energy can be more expensive, how do we look out for low-income residents and seniors for whom utility costs are a major portion of their fixed incomes? You know, I, I certainly am in favor of renewable energy, but I, I wouldn't want it to have a negative effect on low-income people or seniors on fixed incomes, since it has been traditionally more expensive than conventionally generated electricity. Who wants to tackle?
One, it's, it's opt-out, isn't it?
Right.
So it's not a mandatory thing? Okay. Any comment from the council?
Well, I think Sam actually addressed a little bit about this, but one of the things that the CCE could do is actually create programmatic things that are put into place that allow low-income residents to get energy efficiency benefits. We, we can do that now through, what is it called? Mass...
Mass Save.
Mass Save, thank you. Mass Save, but with the CCE, there are more things that can be built in that would support low-income residents. So, but Sam, you know more about the CCE structure that, that actually benefits low-income residents, or...
Yeah, it's very specific to the goals that the, the CCE establishes, and then how it wants to use its ratepayer revenues. It could use some of them to subsidize electricity costs for lower-income residents, and certainly assistance that they, low-income persons already qualify for in Massachusetts, they'd still be eligible for. If you look at average CCE rates in Massachusetts in general during 2017, they're, they're very competitive with the utility's basic rate, oftentimes better than the utility's basic rate. So the assumption is that the, the CCE would be providing a very competitive electricity rate to everyone, and it could, it could go further for low-income residents. But again, that, that goes back to the, to the design of the program and the goals that are written into its mandate.
It's the, the, it is up to the CCE to develop the criteria by which adjustments and accommodations for, based on income, would be made. It's up to the community priorities. So, and I think this is particularly, is particularly relevant now. We subsidize, for instance, supplemental energy or fuel assistance for people with community development block grant funds, while the prospect of those are dimming, those are federal funds. Also, other federal subsidies to offset fuel costs for people who are indigent are being rolled back, and this provides communities, the participating communities more autonomy and, and prioritizing people who are in, where those pressures exist, whereas the distance and the viability of current systems for fossil fuels, not so good.
Please go ahead.
Oh, I, I just want to make sure that in our quest for 100% renewable, we don't result in an electric rate that is considerably higher, puts more strain on seniors on fixed incomes and low and moderate income people. I'd like to make sure that gets mitigated from day one, so that it doesn't make it worse. You know, our interest in being green doesn't make it worse for vulnerable people, and as long as that's in there, I'm fine with it.
And, and to that point, you're speaking to the resolution in toto.
In total.
And not, not specifically to Sam's presentation.
Correct, no, the, Sam did speak about this issue with me earlier, and I'm totally comfortable with the, with the cooperative concept of this, and another source for people to select in buying their... It's, I'm fine with that, it's just making sure that what has been in the past more expensive 100% renewable doesn't disadvantage seniors or low and moderate income people in our, in our quest to be green, that we don't injure them with higher rates, but...
That's, that is an appropriate caution, to be sure.
For, for myself, I am not an expert in this by any means, but it seems, from what I recall reading, that you can certainly make an argument also that over-reliance on certain fossil-fuel energy sources like natural gas can kind of lead to volatility and price spikes, especially around wintertime when everyone needs energy to heat their home. And I think that hits low-income people especially hard, and that goes to Counselor Dwight's point, when, you know, we start facing the prospect of losing layheap funding from the federal government to help people do that, which only pays for part of it anyway. So I think there's some volatility there that is troubling to me in terms of the status quo. Any other discussion from the council? Counselor Sher.
Um, Sam, thank you for this. It was, I talked to you before about this, and I, I appreciate all the work and effort that you put into this. If we were to, to collaborate with Amherst and Pelham, and it was successful, and everything went well, would there be an opportunity for other communities to join? Is there a way for this, to, that collaboration to grow, or would, would this, would be, be this kind of set group, and then they would have to establish their own CCEs?
That's a great question. Under the law, as long as the entity starts out as a joint entity with at least two municipalities involved, then others can join later on. And so our vision is that it would start smaller, because it's, it's more manageable to get it off the ground, and then it would certainly be open to other communities joining, and there can be strategic advantages to scaling up and diversifying your electric load portfolio and having more consumers participating.
Great.
Counselor Bigwell?
A, a, a related question, follow-up to that. The experience of the Cape, what, what, what does that tell us? Did they start with just a few communities and, and, and expand? What, what has been their progression over the years?
Yeah, it's a great question. I believe they started off with the 21-member towns that currently operate that CCE. I think there's a lot that we could learn from them, examples and lessons learned, and certainly, we'd like our joint CCE plus to be tailored to the economic, environmental, and social needs of our local communities, which are somewhat different from the Cape, and it's in terms of size and, and resources and so forth, but I think there's a lot to be drawn from that example, that is certainly feasible. What they do is very different from sort of the traditional broker model that you see among many Massachusetts CCEs, that simply procure electricity from competitive suppliers, hire a broker who charges a fee per kilowatt hour of electricity procured, and therefore has a financial disincentive to lower their energy consumption. The Cape Light Compact went in a different direction. It formed an entity that was, that it staffed itself with permanent staff from its inception, so that it keeps all of its local ratepayer funds local, and it uses those revenues to pay for its staff and all of its operations, and it has traditionally focused heavily on energy efficiency measures, and achieved enormous benefits in that space, and more recently, put energy into developing local renewable generation as well, so sort of phasing that in over time, which is, I think, how we envision this joint CCE operating as well.
So I'd like to, Counselor Klein, then Counselor Dwight.
So, you're kind of talking about this, but I wanted to kind of home in a little bit more on something that I think a lot of people in Northampton have been worried about because of the model that we saw through HCOG, now HCG, and I'm just wondering if you can be a little bit more explicit in kind of delineating the differences between this kind of model and what we saw with HCOG.
Yeah, it's a good question. I think four primary differences. The first is that HCOG's plan proposal... The first is that HCOG's plan proposal was to develop individual CCEs within each participating municipality with no formalized mechanism for them to cooperate with each other, whereas our plan is a joint CCE that allows the communities to work together formally. Second distinction would be that HCOG's plan focused primarily on reducing electricity rates, whereas ours focuses heavily on reducing greenhouse gas emissions while maintaining competitive electric rates. And we believe that by taking steps towards more energy efficiency and renewables, you will eventually stabilize and lower your long-term rates naturally. Third distinction would be that HCOG's plan focused primarily on procuring electric power from competitive suppliers, whereas our plan focuses on phasing in energy efficiency programs and development of local renewable generation. And the fourth distinction would be that HCOG's model was a broker model. HCOG was being compensated on a fee per kilowatt hour of electricity procured, whereas we would be trying to keep those ratepayer revenues within the local communities by using them to staff the joint CCE rather than hire an outside broker. So, yeah.
That's precisely what I was going to ask Sam to expand on.
The, one thing he's actually not mentioning is the fact that the Hampshire Council governments cast a very wide net and had to serve many, many masters, making it even more complicated and problematic. And then they ran up against the DPU ultimately, looped 86 of the plan. This is, this model's actually been established functions, as, as Sam mentions, on the Cape. And as I mentioned briefly, the significant portions of the state of California have initiated. Their, their legislation, ours is multiple pages long, I think, and theirs is paragraph. But the, they, they actually have a very high-functioning system of aggregation that returns a benefit that's adaptable to the communities, that also focuses on the reduction of greenhouse gases and improving efficiencies and conservation. So philosophically, it coincides with everything that we've, we not only espoused in this resolution, but that we've espoused throughout. The Sustainable Energy Plan, the mayor's, this is, this is part and parcel, the mayor's ethos as well, and as the community's ethos has been long since established. It, they're, it conforms much more closely with what we, we have been discussing and envisioning.
Thank you. Are we ready to proceed to a vote on this resolution, or is there other comment from the council?
I would just make one final comment that, you know, as community members, we've worked hard to study this concept and try to answer these important questions, but the reason that we're proposing this in the resolution is because it does need further study, and that's what we're asking the city to help out with. And so, you know, it's not, it's an, it's an ongoing process.
And exactly what process that will take is sort of unclear today, but it's obviously going to include the mayor's office, and it's, you know, it's not just going to be the city council doing this. We're going to have a very detailed look at, at this and see, engage its feasibility. Okay. So with that, why don't we have a roll call on this resolution, please?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Titleman.
Sam?
Councilor Bidwell?
Yes.
Councilor Barnes?
Yes.
Councilor Dwight?
Yes.
Councilor Klein?
Yes.
Councilor Barge?
Yes.
Councilor Murphy?
Yes.
Councilor Nash?
Yes.
Councilor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Councilor Shara?
Yes.
Okay, the resolution passes unanimously. Now, we have a second reading of 17419. This is a resolution to support a $15 minimum wage. There's no objection. I will waive the reading because it was read last time. Is there a motion to approve this?
To approve.
Second?
Is there a second? So made by Councilor Barge, second by Councilor Shara. Any discussion on this resolution or second reading? Oh, please, Councilor Klein.
I actually did want to say something. I didn't, didn't share this last time, partly because it involves me kind of sharing some personal information that I think will illustrate my thoughts about this particular resolution. We had a, a discussion last time that was pretty robust, and one of the things that came up, especially for a couple of the councilors, was the question of whether or not we need to do some kind of tiering for younger workers, and that's something that we heard from Rich Cooper about, who owns Cooper's Corner and State Street, from Judy Harrell at Harrell's Ice Cream. And I, those are people that I respect deeply, and I think, you know, they're running small businesses in this city, and they understand better than anybody else what the, what the pressures are in running those businesses. And at the same time, I have a personal experience that really informs my thoughts about that concept of tiering, and I wanted to share it. And it comes from my experience growing up. I actually worked from the age of 12 to help support my family and literally to put food on the table of my family, and was lucky enough to have a series of employers as a young teenager and an older teenager before I had to leave home that, that remunerated me commensurate with what I was doing and, and at the same rate that people older than me were making doing the same work. And, you know, I, I come from a family that was pretty ravaged by abuse and mental illness, and it was me and my older brother that really had food on the table for the rest of my family. And we were the ones that made sure that my little brother wasn't hungry. And so I, I just, and then working over the years in social service kinds of jobs with people with HIV, people who use drugs, you see so often the kids and the families being the ones who, who are bringing home the bacon, so to speak. They're the ones that at their jobs at Burger King and other places are bringing home the money that really sustains the family. And so I feel really strongly that we have to remunerate people for what they do and that we can't, we can't create tiering systems that, that somehow diminish the importance of what the reason people are working. You know, I spoke in, in the committee meeting when we talked about this in Community Resources, about human dignity, and that's, that's kind of a broad concept, and I'm speaking much more specifically about my own family's experience and the experience of families that I've worked with. But it really is about human dignity. If you're working, the best way that people can be kind of held up and supported in their lives is, is for them to earn their livings and to be able to provide for their, themselves and the people that they live with and the people that they love with dignity. And so I feel really strongly about this resolution. I'm very thankful to the cosponsors for bringing it forward, and I just wanted to, at the same time that I recognize that there are imperatives for, for small business owners and there are struggles that small business owners are dealing with, I absolutely understand that. I also feel really strongly that workers really do deserve to receive a respectable minimum wage that they can support themselves and their families on. So that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other comments? Oh, Councilor Carney.
Thank you. Thank you for those words, Councilor Klein. I also thought about this particular issue quite a bit because I, too, at 14, started working in a nursing home as a nurse's aide, and so was doing really quite difficult work, you know, hard work for a teenager, and was, paid the minimum wage, I, you know, probably similar to other folks, older, number of whom were immigrants, doing the same work. And so, you know, some of the concerns I had about the tiering system are clearly that, you know, there is a competitive disadvantage that those who are placed, that those who really are putting the food on the table for their homes or single heads of households who make up the majority of minimum wage workers would be placed if there were kind of a competitive, lower rate for teenagers. So I don't support that, and I just want to point out that it's not part of the state legislation that this resolution supports. The state legislation doesn't make reference to a tiering system, and, you know, just looking at the wording of the resolution, we're looking to support the spirit of that resolution, which we know will be amended in terms of timelines and things like that. It also, it points, pointing out that with Raisin at Massachusetts, this was one of a package of a number of legislative initiatives that were signature drives. So, I mean, the possibility is, is there could be theoretically three big signature petitions on the November ballot, and I think the hope is that if they can take care of some of these, specifically if this one can be taken care of in the legislative process in the state, in the State House, that would, I mean, there can be a lot of complications with having three big citizen referendum on the ballot. So I do support the resolution as I sponsored it and ask colleagues to support it as well.
Thank you, Councilor. Any, any other comments from the council? Councilor Nash, then Councilor Bidwell?
So I, I'd like to support what Councilor Klein was just mentioning about youth workers being paid fairly, that, you know, the thing is, when we enter the workplace, when we get a job, we're expected to perform that job as we, regardless of our age, we're supposed to perform the job and meet the job requirements. That's how we are measured on the job. And therefore, to have some sort of scaled system that says, well, because you're of a certain age, you don't get paid quite the same amount, I, you know, I can't support that, that concept. I had another thought in there, but it's eluding me right now, but I, I think it was, it's, it's an excellent point, and I do know that it does create hardships. I was talking about this with Patricia Crosby, about, you know, how this could, you know, impact, you know, youth workers, people with disabilities, that, you know, that it, it creates, you know, and, you know, can somebody meet the standard of, you know, what's required of being in, in the workplace? And, you know, that if somebody can do that, they really should be paid the wage that they deserve, so.
Councilor Bidwell? Those are all very compelling comments, and, and thank you. And I, I recognize there's all of those problems with any kind of tiering system. It's probably not the solution. I think the larger question is, and I'll put in another plug for this Senate Task Force public hearing on pressures on, on, on small businesses, basically, is that small businesses that are faced with growing rents and payroll pressure and all the competitions, all the, all the online competition and perhaps Springfield Casino competition, it's just part of a larger package of, of, of very real pressure on, on, on small business. And so I, I'm, I'm just glad there, there is a, a, a body that's specifically charged with looking at this. And one of those issues is, is, you know, the pressure of mandated increasing payrolls, which addresses a critical societal question, but it has consequences too. Any other thoughts? Councilor Barge?
Yes. I want to thank Councilor Alyssa Klein for talking about when she was young and helping and supporting her family and putting food on the table. I can see where our small businesses in the city would have difficulties with going at $15 an hour. The tier system, I thought, was a really a good idea when Councilor Bidwell had brought that up. But I have to say, I think we need to be fair, it needs to be equal, and hopefully at the State House that they will attempt to try to work something out to help protect our small businesses.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other comments? Councilor Murphy?
And I'm, I'm going to continue to abstain for, for two reasons. First of all, somewhere, I think, between $13 an hour and $15 an hour, and Seattle's just getting there, so we would know from Seattle a little bit down the road. But somewhere between $13 an hour and $15 an hour, I think it's going to start to reduce these entry-level jobs, so some jobs will go away and some opportunities won't be had because of the economics of the rate of $15 an hour. And, and I'm, I'm certain it is going to affect a small nonprofit that I'm involved with. I'm going to lose an employee at $15 an hour, plain and simple, gone. I know that. And it's going to happen to other, I mean, this is a nonprofit, but it's going to happen to for-profits as well who have an income ceiling, and it's going to cost them a person. And that's pretty devastating to lose your job, you know, so maybe you're, you're making the minimum wage now, but you lose your job because they can't afford to pay you the new minimum wage, and I, I hate to see people lose that opportunity. And I think we'll know more from what's going on in Seattle a little bit down the road, but, but today, I'm, I'm going to abstain. I'm, you know, I'm certainly not going to vote against it, but I'm not going to go along with it just because of those outstanding questions and, and I know it's going to cost somebody a job that I know, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Looks like we're about ready to proceed to a vote on this. Just, just briefly, what I was planning to say and actually wrote some notes was, I was going to provide some, some facts and figures, and I sort of feel like hearing the, the very personal experiences of Councilor Klein and Councilor Carney and the, and the thoughts of other councilors, in a way, these, these figures seem somewhat pale. I was going to mention that on January 1st of this year, 18 states raised their minimum wages. Massachusetts will not for the first time in four years. The states of Arizona, Colorado, Maine, Oregon, and Washington approved minimum wages that are already above the Commonwealth's $11 an hour minimum wage. And as I think some mentioned last time, California and New York are on their way toward a $15 minimum wage. I was going to mention that with regards to possible job losses, you know, when we, as a state, raised the minimum wage in 2014, the minimum wage in Massachusetts was $11 an hour. Since then, employers have added more than 211,000 jobs in Massachusetts. And, you know, it's a complex picture. You can't necessarily attribute one to the other, but that is an economic reality, that there have not been devastating economic losses in the state. In fact, you can point to some very positive, salutary, beneficial impacts on the economy. And finally, I saw just today that 39% of all Americans have reported that they don't have $1,000 if something happens, you know, to their car, to their roof, something unexpected happens in their lives. They don't have the savings to be able to weather that storm. You know, I think we see income inequality rising in the United States and right here in our home, and at the same time, we see the value of the minimum wage going down automatically because it's, 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 it goes down due to cost of living increases. So those are all facts and figures, but I have to say that, again, hearing Councilor Carney and Councilor Klein talk about their experiences, I have no doubt that what you're expressing is what many people are going through in their own lives, and that, for me, underscores the importance of the city council taking, taking a stance on this issue. So with that, why don't we, why don't we have a roll call of the council?
Councilor Carney?
Yes.
Councilor Dwight?
Yes.
Councilor Klein?
Yes.
Councilor Barge?
Yes.
Councilor Murphy?
I abstained.
Councilor Nash?
Yes.
Councilor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Councilor Shara?
Yes.
And Councilor Bidwell? Yes.
Thank you very much. So that is approved unanimously. We come now to the consent agenda, which contains the following items. First, the minutes of January 2nd, 2018, our organizational meeting, and the following appointments. To the Council on Aging, Dennis Helmes of 176 North Street for a term of January 2018 to June 2021. To the Conservation Commission, Elizabeth Roblica, 406 North Farms Road, Florence, from January 2018 to June 2021. To the Energy and Sustainability Commission, Benjamin Wheel of 123 Audubon Road in Leeds from January 2018 to June 2021. And Ashley Musprat of 4 Fort Hill Terrace in Northampton, January 2018 to June 2021. And also, to the Public Shade Tree Commission, Jay Gerard of 156 Ryan Road in Florence, from, from the past, apparently, July 1st, 2017. from, from the past, apparently, July 1st, 2017, to June 30th, 2020. Are there any removals from the consent agenda?
Should it say these appointments refer to the Committee on City Services?
Thank you. Yes, a vote for these appointments will be equivalent to referring them to the City Services Committee. Thank you, Counselor. So, the motion to approve the consent agenda was made by Counselor LeBarge and seconded by Counselor Dwight. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
If no, the consent agenda is approved. And so, now, we will recess for the Committee on Finance. Counselor Dwight.
Actually, call for a general recess.
Oh, sure. So, let's see. Ten minutes?
Ten minutes, sounds perfect.
Good. Okay, this is the Northampton City Council, back again from our recess. And now, it is time to recess in a different way for our Committee on Finance. And so, I'll turn it over to our temporary chair, Counselor David Murphy.
Thank you. And this is the first official meeting. We need to actually get together because we get together in council. So, we can call the roll of finance.
Counselor Carney.
Present.
Counselor LeBarge.
Present.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor Sherrill.
Here.
And I believe, did we not survive the same as last time?
I'm new.
You're new?
Yeah, congratulations.
Does he return?
Counselor Nash.
Counselor, oh, that's right, we lost Counselor Nash.
We didn't lose him.
He's coping with that.
He's broken up.
He seems to be coping with that. So, the, the first thing we need to do is an elect, is elect a chair. So, do we have a motion to open nominations?
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And do we have nominations?
I nominate David Murphy.
Second.
Do we have a second for that? All right, thank you. Do we have any other nominations?
Move to close.
Second.
Move to close nominations, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Move to elect Counselor Murphy by acclamation.
Second.
Why don't we?
Or if you want to have the roll call.
Why don't we just call a roll, that's easy, just call a roll call. So, would you call a roll?
Counselor Carney.
Counselor Murphy.
Counselor LeBarge.
Counsel, Counselor Murphy.
Counselor Murphy.
I'll vote for Counselor Murphy.
Counselor Sherrill.
Counselor Murphy.
I've had enough confidence to vote for myself, since you've been kind enough to nominate me. And now, we should also elect a vice chair. So, open nominations for that?
Move to open nominations for vice chair.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Do we have a nomination for a vice chair? Counselor.
I'll nominate Counselor Carney.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Motion to close nominations.
Move to close nominations.
Second.
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 All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Then, would you please call the roll for Counselor Carney?
Sure. Counselor Carney.
Counselor Carney.
Counselor LeBarge.
Counselor Carney.
Counselor Murphy.
Counselor Carney.
Counselor Sherrill.
Counselor Carney.
Great. Thank you very much for your, for your confidence. And so, the next thing we need to do is approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Do we have those in our, our packets? Yes?
Move to approve.
Second, but can I also ask a point of order? Since I wasn't on the committee, what do we, I can't remember what we do about approving minutes when you were not part of the committee.
If I may, you, you may abstain, you're not required to. If you don't doubt the veracity of the minutes, you can vote yes, but feel free to abstain.
Yeah. And though you weren't a member of the body, the meeting was held at council, so you, you
I remember.
You were a member of the body, but you were here for the meeting, so it's not, it's not something that you were not, you know, that you were not around.
Right.
So, we had a motion, yes, and a, and a second? Then, if there's no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, proposed? So, now, it's time for, if you'll all recall, Susan gives us, our Finance Director, for those watching at home, gives us quarterly financial updates. And we're starting to get well along into the fiscal year, so there's more to talk about.
Not too much, but we're halfway through the year, and I gave you four reports, revenues for the General Fund, expenditures for the General Funds minus the school budgets, and then revenues and expenditures for the Enterprise Funds. The General Fund revenues are on track. There's really nothing terribly exciting to talk about. Some of the indicators that are, that can be variable are the ones that have an economic component to them, like the meals and the hotel tax, motor vehicle excise tax. It's too early to tell where motor vehicle excise tax is going because we do the big commitment in February. But as far as hotel, motel, and meals, hotel motel taxes are up twelve thousand dollars over the same time last year, which is about a three percent increase. And meals tax is up thirty-two thousand dollars over this time last year, which is about a nine percent increase. So, those are really good numbers, and those are ones that we would call economic indicators. So, other than that, everything else is pretty much on track. Building department revenue is doing quite well as, as well, and that's another one that we would look at in terms of where the local economy is going. So, building permits, plumbing, wiring, and inspection services are doing quite well as well. They're very busy. So, other than that, there's not much to talk about in the revenues. They're, they're on track. Likewise, with the expenditures in the General Fund, almost all the salary accounts are either at fifty percent or slightly less, if they've had some vacancies. There really are no areas that I see of concern. Usually, about this time, I'll start doing a week, bi-weekly payroll projection and running that after every payroll from now till the end of the year, just to track, to make sure the departments are on, on, you know, on budget and not seeing any spikes in overtime. So, I don't usually start that until after the mid-year point. In terms of the Enterprise Funds, they're also right on track. All of them have, in terms of revenue, brought in at least fifty percent of their revenues so far. All of them are at fifty percent or slightly above, and their expenditures, again, are right on track. So, there's really no areas of concern that I see. The only thing is snow and ice. If you, if I go back to the General Fund and you look at the snow and ice halfway through the year, and that won't pick up the snowstorms that we just had, were only thirty-one percent expended. But we've had, that was through December, so we've had some snow since then. So, that's one that we're going to watch because we budget about four seventy-five for that, and every, not every year, but most years, we do go over, so.
Questions for Susan on her quarterly report?
Did the new parking system have an impact on parking revenue?
I'm just starting to analyze the, the parking revenue. In terms of usage, there's definitely an uptick in the number of people using the app and using credit cards. So, we're just trying, starting to analyze the cost of the, you know, the cost of the credit cards. I would say, just the general trends, is that parking revenue is on or above where it was this time last year, ticket revenue is down. There have been some times where the system has been down, and the month of July was a little bit hard to gauge because we were implementing the system then. So, I do expect parking revenues to see a little dip this year just because of the implementation phase and because, you know, credit card fees are going to take some of that revenue. But in general, the, kind of the good news is that tickets are down, so we suspect people are probably using the app so that they don't get a ticket. Or the system is convenient enough that if they don't have cash on them, they're not caught, they have their, they can use their credit card. So, so I think so far, we're seeing pretty positive things.
It's too bad there's no press here to note that you say ticket being down is a good thing.
Yeah.
It's not usually what people think we feel about that.
Yeah, no, ticket, ticket revenue is down, and I, and it, I think in part because of people's, the convenience of being able to pay.
Thanks.
Counsel, please. Are the ticket prices down commensurate with the amount of parking fees? So, are the fines corresponding with the fees that drop in the?
Again, I'm just starting to analyze the data. We just, you know, six months of data just came, you know, we just can't close December, so I haven't even had a chance to, like, put December in and get a six-month picture. But again, we didn't start Park Mobile till September, and the machines didn't get implemented till July a little bit later, so, and we had some, you know, times when it ran, went down, and I think we had some times, one time in September, another time in October. So, so I haven't got enough of a trend to say this is where it's going.
But you are seeing a relatively robust increase in hotel and meals tax.
Absolutely. So, you would think that that would be a corresponding.
Right.
Yeah. So, so I'll be looking at that now that I, I was waiting for the data to come in because the deposits were made the last week of December or the first week of January, and they'll get credited back. And then, I'll have a good six months to do a comparison.
Any additional questions for Susan on her quarterly report? Generally, good news for halfway through the year. All right, we'll keep our fingers crossed.
All right.
Thank you. The next, next, we have a number of appropriations for the Preservation Act. And I see Sarah LaValle in the back of the room. It's time to put her to work. So, the first one, we'll start going through them. They're all on the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee. The first one is eighteen zeros over four. It's in order to appropriate Community Preservation Act funds for housing support services. Order that whereas the Northampton Housing Partnership submitted an application for Community Preservation Act funding for housing supportive services, a program to continue to provide housing coordinator to work with low-income housing residents to ensure that they're able to maintain tenancy. And whereas the project works to ensure that low and moderate income residents of Northampton are able to sustain and thrive within Northampton's community housing, and has prevented fifty local evictions in three years that it has been in operation. Whereas the project is supported by numerous community stakeholders, including the Northampton Housing Authority, Valley CDC, Wayfinders Service Net, Home City Housing, and Hampshire County Housing Court. And whereas on November 15th, 2017, the Northampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend that eighty thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars in Community Preservation Act funds be used to continue to support this project, now therefore, it be ordered that eighty thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act fund to the Northampton Housing Partnership for continuation of the housing supportive services project, and that the grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor, and the city council. Specifically, fifty-eight thousand dollars is appropriated from the CPA Affordable Housing Reserve, and twenty-two thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars is appropriated from the CPA Undesignated Reserve. Do we have a motion, Finance?
Make a motion.
Second? Okay. And Sarah, do you want to come up and answer any questions that anyone might have? And you, do you have, do you want to do a presentation on everything, or do you want to do them as we go along?
All we can do is go along. I have one slide for each presentation.
Perfect.
So, just to start out, this was a tough round for the CPC.
This is the overall first slide.
Yes, so they had a lot of applications for much, much more money than they had available, unfortunately, so it was, a lot of difficult decisions had to be made. So, seven, seven, seven hundred thousand, seven hundred thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars in total funding recommendations this year. And this is leveraging a, a lot of money from many other sources and matching funds and volunteer work. And getting to this project, the Community Housing Supportive Services, this was determined eligible as support of community housing. So, this is a little bit different from a typical project where we're creating new units, but the CPC felt that this was a really important project. Fifty-plus evictions were prevented in the first three years of the program, and many of these were from Housing Authority properties, so this is something that's really saving the city a significant amount of money in more ways than one. And this will allow the program to continue through FY 2019. This was funded back in 2014, and the city had looked for different ways to fund this program, and it's sort of an interesting niche, so there's not a lot of ways to do that, but the CPC felt that it was really important to keep it going.
Yeah, I think I just want to remind folks, housing is one of the designated areas for CPC funding, so the money has to be spent on housing.
It does, yes. So, there's, there's a ten percent set aside that you approve at a different point in the year for community housing, historic preservation, and open space and recreation.
So, questions for Sarah on this one? Counselor.
Yeah, the, the housing coordinator that's really at the core of this. On whose payroll, who's that person actually worked for?
She works for, I pay her invoices, and I'm not going to be able to come up with the name of the organization, but it's a, it's a nonprofit out of Springfield that specializes in, in this type of work, and they manage a lot of other services as well. Not Wayfinders, it's an acronym.
Is it HAP, are they?
No.
Okay, but.
I can, I can get.
It's, it's one of the nonprofits that's part of the Housing Partnership.
It is, yeah.
Okay.
Any other? This is more generic, but they, I, and I know, as Counsel Murphy pointed out, that housing is one dimension of CPA qualification. Sometimes we've fallen proportionally a little lower on, on, on housing, and I know that this, this time, this round was a concerted effort trying to make, to make an expanded emphasis on promoting, preserving, and building new, new housing. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, that's correct. The committee funded every housing request that came before them. They weren't able to fund everything in its entirety, but after a discussion with applicants, they funded everything at a level that would allow the project to go ahead. One that we'll discuss later, the, the Community Builders Project on Village Hill, that was given an initial fifty thousand dollars, which will allow the community builders to seek DFC tax credits, and then they'll likely come back for additional CPA funds, once they have those, and the, the committee will most likely vote to award those at that time. And the, the, the Valley CDC project is similar to that. There's a three hundred thousand dollar recommendation from the committee at this point, and last round, the committee recommended an initial fifty thousand. So, that, that's pretty typical, they fund things as they can.
And when we say housing, just so the public's clear on this, it's, in, in, our, our money is devoted towards affordable and accessible housing, and promoting that as opposed to less affordable development schemes and systems.
Yes. CPA funds are only allowed to be spent on funding for people making a hundred percent or less of area median income. And generally, the projects that the committee is supporting are much, much less than that.
Thank you. Other, any other questions on this one? No? Good. All right. And here, and all in favor of a positive recommendation in Finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, proposed? All right. The next one is eighteen zero zero five, in order to appropriate Community Preservation Act funds for restoration of the jail farm parcel for use as agriculture. Order that whereas the Northampton Office of Planning and Sustainability submitted an application for Community Preservation Act funding for restoration of the three-acre former jail farm parcel in the meadows, and whereas the parcel is being provided to the city at no cost as, as a state surplus property, and a small investment of CPA funds will restore the long vacant farmland to working agriculture, and whereas the parcel will be permanently protected through an agricultural preservation restriction, and whereas on September 27th, 2017, the Northampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend that three thousand dollars in Community Preservation Act funds be used to support this project, now therefore, it be ordered that three thousand dollars be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding to the jail farm restoration project, and the grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor, and the city council. Specifically, three thousand dollars is allocated from the CPA Open Space Reserve. We have a motion, Finance?
So, move.
Second? Great.
All right. So, this is an acquisition that city council approved several years ago. It's a surplus property from DCAM. This was used by the Hampshire County, it was a jail at that point, when they were still located downtown. They, they'd go out and grow things, but that was abandoned in the 1980s, and it's been vacant ever since. DCAM has been looking more at properties they own and trying to surplus things that they really don't need, that are of more use to communities, and this certainly fits the bill. So, we're, for a really pretty small investment, this will allow the city to return this to active agriculture and license it to a farmer.
Counsel LeBarge.
How much clearing out Sarah needs to be done there?
You can see in the picture that it's, it's grown up quite a bit. There's some encroachment from the farmer to the north, which is probably a good thing in this case, but there's trees that need to be cut down and some junk that needs to be removed. I mean, nothing too serious, but it will take a little bit of.
So, once it's cleared out.
So once it's cleared out, then what are we going to do with it?
Then we will license it to a farmer, maybe an adjoining farmer, somebody who's looking to maybe develop a.
Any other, Counselor's care?
And the, the three thousand dollars of small grant fund, is that sufficient to clear that out and be able to lease it?
Uh, we think so. It, it will be matched by three thousand dollars from the Office of Planning and Sustainability. And there, it's, we're hoping to get some volunteer labor as well, so we're hoping this will take care of it.
Counselor Nash.
So at one point, there was discussion of having some plots for gardening on that property. And also access that linking up with other properties. Is that off the table for now or is the leasing it to farmers just a short-term plan? Is there a longer-term vision beyond, you know, just leasing it to farmers?
Yeah, I, that, that's one idea. There's certainly discussions that could be had regarding use of the property later. But we can't really have those discussions until we get the trees and all the trash off of it. So that will be something that will happen down the road.
Any other questions on this one?
Thank you, I would just like to know a little bit more, whatever you could say about the process by which the city will decide whom to lease this to and how that would, how would that work? This sort of ties in with Counselor Nash's question, I suppose, in a general way.
So this property will be controlled by the Conservation Commission, but managed by the Agriculture Commission. So that would be a discussion that would be held with that body down the road.
Thank you, and if we lease it to a farmer, would those, one of those entities become fiscally the, the entity that actually receives money from these individuals and keeps track of all that as a landlord?
We've gotten away from taking monetary payments for these small agricultural parcels. So we, in, instead of collecting one hundred or two hundred dollars a year, whatever property is worth, we require the licensee to maintain and improve the property, which seems to be a better arrangement for everybody. So if it's somebody who's just looking to get into farming and they, they don't really have the funding available, that's, and that's a good arrangement for them and it makes sense for the city as well.
That's their, that's their compensation and that gets us around our, the prohibition we would have on just giving something to somebody, which we, we can't really ever do.
Absolutely, like the, the Elwell property, for example, the, the farmer there is required to maintain the gate and the roadway, which is a significant cost that the city would have to cover otherwise.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions on this one? Seeing none, then all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the next one is eighteen zero zero seven. It's in order to appropriate Community Preservation Act funds for the Mass Central Rail Trail Extension. Oh, you know, these, I'm going to get used to the fact that these are, they're printed on the back now. They're back to back now, and pick me out with that. Yeah, we did kind of jump right up to eight. Again, still from Council, Community Preservation Committee. Eighteen zeros of six, in order to appropriate Community Preservation Act funds for open space acquisition. Order that whereas the Northampton Conservation Commission and Office of Planning and Sustainability submitted an application for purchase of five open space parcels totaling sixty-three acres in the Mineral Hills and Rocky Hill Greenway. And whereas the Mining Heritage Project will provide opportunities for cultural and geological outdoor classrooms in what may be Northampton's last example of an eighteenth-century mine. And the Rocky Hill Greenway will add to the valuable wildlife and plant habitat linkage between Arcadia Wildlife Sanctuary and the Connecticut River Flood Plain. And whereas the project meets the goals of the Sustainable Northampton Plan, Northampton Community Preservation Plan and the Open Space Recreation and Multi-Use Trail Plan to protect open space, provide for passive recreation and protect heritage landscapes. And whereas on November fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, the Northampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend that one hundred twenty-five thousand four hundred and twelve dollars in Community Preservation Act funds be used to support this project. Now therefore it be ordered that one hundred twenty-five thousand four hundred and twelve dollars be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding to the Northampton Conservation Commission and Office of Planning and Sustainability for the Priority Open Space Acquisition Project. And that the grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor and the council. Specifically, one hundred and eleven thousand dollars is appropriated from the CPA Open Space Reserve and fourteen thousand four hundred and twelve dollars is appropriated from the CPA Undesignated Reserve. Do we have a motion in finance?
Second.
All right.
All right, so both of the, well, all of these acquisitions actually were previously approved by council in two thousand seventeen. So I won't go into them in too much detail. But the areas include opportunities for trail and wildlife connections and views and, and historic lead mine as well, which is really pretty cool. I've tried to take pictures of it, but you just can't get the scale in the photo. So I'd be happy to take you out for a visit once we do acquire it. And we're requesting two readings to allow closings to occur. The sellers have been really willing to work with us so far, but they're, it's getting to be a really long process. So we'd like to close and do two readings if possible.
Questions, Counselor LaBarge?
Who would we purchase any of the property from?
The Mining Heritage site is, I've moved on to other acquisitions, so I don't have them on the top of my head anymore. I will have to follow up.
Any other questions for Sarah on these two acquisitions? All right, none, then all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So now we go to eighteen zero zero seven, which is the Preservation Act funds for the Mass Central Rail Trail Extension. Order that whereas the Northampton Office of Planning and Sustainability submitted an application for Community Preservation Act funding for continued construction on the Mass Central Rail Trail in Leeds. And whereas the project meets the goals of the Northampton Sustainability Plan and Open Space Recreation and Multi-Use Trail Plan. And whereas the project has wide community and regional support and will bring the trail to the Williamsburg Town Line. And whereas CPA funds will be used to match, as they match for federal recreation trails program grant funds. And whereas on November fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, the Northampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend that fifty thousand dollars in Community Preservation Act funds be used for this project. Now therefore it be ordered that fifty thousand dollars be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding to the Mass Central Rail Trail Extension. And that the grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor and the council. Specifically, the fifty thousand is allocated from the CPA Undesignated Reserve. Do we have a motion in finance?
Make a motion.
Second? Second?
All right, before I start this one, William Walker trustee is the, was the current owner of the Mining Heritage property. So I, we've been, Wayne and I have been before you many times with this project. As the, as the trail continues its very slow march towards the Williamsburg line. I like to use this picture because it, it shows what happens when we ran out of funding for the project. So there's a beautiful trail and then it just stops and it's sort of a mud hole. So this will match fifty thousand dollars in federal recreational trails program funds. Williamsburg also received a fifty thousand dollar grant. So we'll be working with that community to maximize all of our funds and hopefully have a ribbon cutting at the town line very soon.
Excellent, Counselor LaBarge, you had a question?
I think this is great that we're going to go ahead and expand up to the Williamsburg Town Line. And if you just like during spring, straight through the summer, I mean, up, up in Leeds, once, twice a week. My husband even more than that because of family there. And the amount of people using that trail. It's unbelievable.
Yeah, it's really nice and the views, especially this time of year, when, also when there's no mosquitoes of the Mill River are really beautiful.
Well, certainly no mosquitoes out there today, that's for sure. Other questions for Sarah on this one? Counselor Bidwell.
And once at the town line, then, 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 then what?
Williamsburg is, has been developing their portion of the trail and they're also working for a safe access off of the goat path, as they call it, down onto the roadway and then north towards Williamsburg Center. They have some challenges along Route nine because that roadway has been expanded with twice basically as much as it, as it could. So making that access safe is a challenge, but they're working hard on it.
But they've got site control?
Uh, for the goat path area, at least to get onto the roadway, they do, yes.
Any other questions for Sarah on this one? Hearing none, then all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. All right, we're on to eighteen zero zero eight. This is in order to appropriate Community Preservation Act funds for the Sergeant House Expansion Project at eighty-two Bridge Street. Order that whereas the Valley Community Development Corporation submitted an application to Community Preservation Act for funding for the Sergeant House Expansion at eighty-two Bridge Street. And whereas the project will increase and improve the number of affordable rental units at the existing property from fifteen SRO occupancy units to approximately thirty enhanced single-room occupancy units, including units accessible, units, units, accessible units, units for the homeless and for the Department of Mental Health. And will also rehabilitate a historic structure. Whereas the project was reviewed and approved by the Northampton Historic Commission and is listed as a contributing property to the pending Palmeroy Terrace National Register Historic District. And whereas suitable affordable housing, especially single-room occupancy housing and of that type is in demand locally and regionally. And whereas the housing units will be restricted to individuals earning sixty percent of the area median income or below. And whereas the city has already supported the project through a fifty thousand dollar CPA award and a forty R zoning overlay. And the project will leverage funds from a variety of other sources. And whereas on November fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, the Northampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend that an additional three hundred thousand dollars in Community Preservation Act funds be used to support this project. Now therefore it be ordered that three hundred thousand dollars be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding to the Valley Community Development Corporation for Sergeant House Expansion Project for historic rehabilitation and capital repairs to eighty-two Bridge Street and the expansion of affordable housing. And that the grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor and the council. Specifically, seventy-five thousand is appropriated from the CPA Historic Reserve and two hundred and twenty-five thousand is appropriated from the CPA Undesignated Reserve. Do we have a motion? And, second?
Second.
All right.
So this is the second time that this project, actually the third, the third time that this project is coming before council once for an initial fifty thousand dollar recommendation from the, from the Community Preservation Committee to demonstrate local support for tax credit applications, which have since been received. And then it came before you again for a forty R zoning approval. So this will create really needed single-room occupancy, very low affordability units, very close to downtown and also rehabilitate a historic structure. This is located within the Palmeroy Terrace National Registered District, which should be approved by the Park Service sometime this spring. So that's moving forward. The committee really, really like, liked this project a lot and they awarded Valley CDC the full amount that they requested.
Counselor LaBarge.
I think this is just fantastic, we're going from fifteen to thirty. I mean, we're in dire need in this city for SROs. And I think it's well worth with CPA money to support this.
Yeah, it's, it's been a, a great set of housing units close to downtown, but they really need a lot of work. And this is a really needed project.
Counselor, it up?
Ms. LaValle, do you know the total cost for this phase of the project that we are contributing this three hundred thousand dollars to?
This will be the entire build-out of the project.
So there's no other costs that they're bearing? I mean, you mentioned they had received other funding from other, from the state, I think. So do you know the total budget? Because the total budget isn't three hundred thousand dollars.
No, no, it's significantly more than that, it's many millions of dollars. I don't have the exact number in front of me and I, it had been changing a little bit during the application process. But it, it's many million dollars.
That's okay, it lets me make my point that the three hundred thousand dollars, which sounds like a lot, is being leveraged many times over.
It is, yeah.
So that's just one of the things that, spending CPA money on housing, that's one of the benefits of doing that. We're spending three hundred thousand, but we're, it's for a project that essentially leverages much more money. That's not city money.
It is.
So, and, and I just wanted to point that out because I think that is a very good thing about this project.
The development of these types of project is, projects is incredibly expensive, both for the, the capital cost and also the long-term affordability that, you know, that's a decrease in the property value going forward. And the city's contribution per unit is really incredibly much for this project. So we're seeing a lot of value out of that.
Thank you.
Other quick, Counselor's care?
So this is great, obviously, because it's, it's a twofer, as you noted. It, it hits both historic restoration and affordable housing. How did the committee come up with the seventy-five thousand from the Historic Reserve Fund? Is there, is there some sort of calculus that we use to determine?
So the, the committee asked for some information from the applicant about how much of the project could be attributed to historic preservation. They came back with a number that was much, much larger than this. And the, the reason that this particular number is being used is basically because that's what they needed to make the numbers work for this funding route.
Any additional questions on this one? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, this is eighteen zero zero nine, in order to appropriate CPA funds for affordable housing as part of Village Hill Apartments. Whereas the community builders submitted an application for Community Preservation Act funding for the creation of affordable housing units as part of the Village Hill Apartments. And whereas the project will create approximately sixty-five units of mixed-income rental housing at Village Hill on two parcels. And thirty-five of these will be restricted to households, individuals earning sixty percent of the area median income or below. And whereas open space and playgrounds are part of the project will be open and available for use by the public. And whereas the community builders has an excellent record providing affordable housing in Northampton and beyond. And whereas the project will leverage funds from a variety of sources. And whereas on November fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, the Northampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend that fifty thousand dollars in Community Preservation Act funds be used to support this project. Now therefore it be ordered that fifty thousand dollars be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding to the community builders for Village Hill Apartments project. And that the grantee meet the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor and the council. Specifically, the fifty thousand is appropriated from the CPA Affordable Housing Reserve. We have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
I did have a slide for this project, which has apparently been eaten by PowerPoint. But basically it was just showing the location of the project in Village Hill. So this is the last significant residential development on the north side of Village Hill. So if you're looking at the area, it's everything that's, that's undeveloped on the, the north portion. And an, an initial commitment of fifty thousand is being recommended to demonstrate local support for this project. That's creating thirty-five units of income-restricted community housing at Village Hill. It received a, a lot of support from the neighborhood. This probably won't be the last time that this project will be before you. But the community builders agreed that this was enough to demonstrate commitment as they go for their tax credits and other applications.
Questions, Counselor LaBarge?
Yes, sixty-five units of mixed income, rental housing on two parcels, how big are the parcels?
Uh, the, the north parcel is very large, it's fifteen acres or so. The other parcel is right next to the, the new columns building, where the male attendance building has been renovated. That's a much smaller parcel, their headquarters will also be located there.
So thirty-five of these will be restricted to households and individuals earning sixty percent of area median income or below?
Yes, that's correct. So that the CPA would allow funding to be spent on anything that's a hundred percent or below this? But this is even significantly below that.
And they're also saying that with the three open space and a playground open for the use of the public?
Yes, that's correct. There will be, there's, will be protected open space along the, the Mill River that will be available for use as well as a playground that they've indicated will also be available for public use.
Other questions? Counselor Bidwell.
Well, there, there's many things I like about this, this, this project. It was really excellent that the state selected the community builders as, as the developer. There were, there were numerous proposals for this market rate housing. And as the last residential development site, as you say, up in, up in Village Hill, I think this is, it's tremendous. And I was very glad to see such enthusiastic abutter and neighbor support for this. So, and I'm also very happy that there's going to be some, you know, playgrounds part of this too. Is this, it, it's really become for, for folks who have not been up to look, drive around Village Hill or walk around or bike around in a while, it is quite remarkable how, in a larger scheme of things and a relatively short period of time, a quite remarkable and now fairly complete feeling community exists up there. And this is a really nice kind of capstone to it all. So I'm delighted that we can add some support to it.
Of the thirty-five units, do you know? Um, of the thirty-five units, do you know roughly what size those units are going to be? Are they, will they be for families, so?
Uh, that I don't know. It, the project was approved by the planning board two weeks ago, so those, that some of that information should be available in those documents, but I, I would think that the community builders is probably still fine tuning exactly how big the units will be.
Do you know if they're all the same size?
They are not, as far as I know.
Any other questions on this one? No? Hearing none? Then all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right. Eighteen zero one zero, "In order to appropriate CPA funds to the Conservation Fund." Whereas the North Hampton Conservation Commission submitted an application for Community Preservation Act funding for the Conservation Fund, and whereas the fund makes possible increased acquisitions or protection of open space parcels in North Hampton by supporting fast action on time-sensitive real estate opportunities and placement of permanent conservation restrictions, and whereas the project may leverage additional public and/or private funds, and whereas the project meets the goals of the North Hampton Sustainability Plan for Protection of Open Space and Agricultural Lands, and whereas the applicant has used these funds effectively in the past towards the protection of several hundred acres of open space, reflecting the goals established by the Community Preservation Committee, and whereas all lands purchased will be reviewed and approved by the Conservation Commission and the City Council, and whereas on November fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, the North Hampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend that fifty thousand dollars in Community Preservation Act funds be used to support this project, now therefore it be ordered that fifty thousand dollars be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding to the North Hampton Conservation Fund, and that the grantees meet the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor and the city council. We have a motion? Second?
Second.
All righty.
All right, so no slide for this one, but if we were to make a slide, it could essentially be everything that the CPA has ever protected.
That it's done so far.
Yeah. Um, most of the open space acquisitions that have taken place wouldn't have been possible without this fund. It allows for due diligence and quick action and implementation of CRs and just all of the not that exciting stuff about land acquisition to take place.
Uh, Counselor Larch is good on this one, and we've seen this, we've seen this, we've seen this go by enough, and we know that it's worked, and we're all comfortable with it. So, positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? No? All right. And, uh, the next one is eighteen zero one one, "In order to appropriate CPA funds for Habitat for Humanity on Garfield Avenue." Order that whereas Pioneer Valley Habitat for Humanity submitted an application for Community Preservation Act funding for construction of an affordable single-family home on Garfield Avenue, and whereas the project will provide an energy-efficient ownership unit that is harmonious in design with the existing neighborhood and suitable for a small household, and whereas Habitat for Humanity has an excellent record of creating housing throughout the Pioneer Valley and beyond, whereas the project has wide community support, leverages funds from many other sources, and utilizes volunteer labor, and whereas the home will be restricted to an individual or families earning sixty percent of the area median income or below, and whereas on November fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, the North Hampton Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend twenty thousand dollars in Community Preservation Act funds to be used to support this project, now therefore it be ordered that twenty thousand dollars be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act Fund to Pioneer Valley Habitat for Humanity for Garfield Avenue Affordable Housing Project, and that the grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor and the city council, specifically the twenty thousand dollars is appropriated from the CPA Undesignated Reserve. We have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second? Okay.
All right, so Garfield Avenue is located just north of Route Nine, east of Florence. It's a great location.
Beautiful work, though.
Near the bike path. This is in a neighborhood that has several Habitat for Humanity homes already, so every lot shown on this survey, except for Lot One A, which is the subject property, is a Habitat for Humanity house. Habitat for Humanity, as you all know, is a great organization that, with the help of a lot of community input, creates affordable homeownership units, which are challenging to find locally. This was a lot that was subject to the Small Lots Big Ideas Competition. The ultimate owner decided to donate it to Habitat for Humanity. They thought that was a fitting use for it, so Habitat is coming in to do this one last lot on Garfield Avenue.
Has anybody been up there to see those? You've seen them? Yeah, seen them?
No.
Counselor Larch, you had a question?
I've seen them.
Yeah? You had a question, or?
Yeah.
No? Anyone have a question on this? All right. Then all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
And our last one is eighteen zero one two, "In order to appropriate CPA funds for three Habitat for Humanity affordable houses on Glendale Road." Order that whereas Pioneer Valley Habitat for Humanity submitted an application for Community Preservation Act funding for the creation of three affordable single-family homes on Glendale Road, and whereas the project is a collaboration with the city of North Hampton, will provide energy-efficient ownership units that are harmonious in design and scale with the existing neighborhood, and whereas Habitat for Humanity has an excellent record of creating housing throughout the Pioneer Valley and beyond, whereas the project has wide community support, leverages funds from many other sources, and utilizes volunteer labor, and whereas the homes will be restricted to individuals and families earning sixty percent of the area median income or below, and whereas on November fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, the Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to recommend that sixty thousand dollars in Community Preservation Act funds be used in support of this project, now therefore it be ordered that the sixty thousand dollars be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act funding, Pioneer Valley Habitat for Humanity for Glendale Road Zero Net Affordable Housing Project, and that the grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor and the city council, specifically the sixty thousand dollars is appropriated from the CPA Affordable Housing Reserve. We have a motion in finance? Second?
Second.
All right, so slightly larger dollar round, because there are three units instead of one with this project. This was part of a municipally-sponsored limited development project for the former Kensington Estates on Glendale Road and West Hampton Road. Lots one through, lots two, three, and four on this map are the, the subject properties, and the shaded area is now permanently protected conservation land. This map shows what it would have looked like with the previously approved subdivision. The Community Preservation Committee thought this, again, was a, just a great project to provide homeownership units in, in a neighborhood where it can be tough to obtain those for, those with low incomes.
Uh, Counselor Larch?
On the three lots, because I was highly involved with this project, that we completely got rid of twenty-four houses with the fifty acres of open space and three homes, and one was supposed to be handicapped accessible. Is that still in the plans?
I believe it is.
And it was supposed to have been the first house? Because it's closer to the...
Yeah, it didn't specifically come up during the discussions, but if that was part of the initial agreement, I'm sure that's something that Habitat is planning on. They are, they're working on a, a different type of housing rather than, than doing from the ground-up stick-built housing. They're gonna, they're looking at mobile units, which are really energy-efficient and come at a significant cost savings, and those may all actually be handicapped accessible, but it's something I'd have to check with Habitat on.
Another question? Counselor Skerr?
Yeah, um, sorry, is there something magic about twenty thousand dollars for, for a Habitat unit? So these, there are four that we're voting on tonight, and so they each come out to twenty thousand. Is that what they asked for, or is there a reason why?
That's what they requested. I don't know of, how their magic formula worked out for these projects, but that's what they needed to make the projects work.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on, on this one? And hearing none, you're night strong to close here, Sarah. All in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? No? And, uh, that is the end, uh, end of our agenda, I think, for tonight, so, uh, there are no, since this is our first meeting, there's no other business, so, a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
I'm happy to stick around for the full council discussion, if you'd like me to. If nothing's, will come up, then...
Does any counselor request that?
No.
No. So, thank you very much for all your time.
Thank you.
All right, and so all in favor of adjournment? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And we are back to the full city council, and we first come to item eighteen zero zero four, "In order to appropriate Community Preservation Act funds for housing support services." First reading.
Moved, approved.
Approved, second.
Made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Larch. Any discussion on this order? A roll call, whenever we can.
Uh, Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Larch?
Yes.
Yes, I did.
Counselor Murphy? Aye.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Donald?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
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 Okay, the next is eighteen point zero zero five, "In order to appropriate Community Preservation Act funds for restoration of the Jail Farm Parcel to agricultural use." First reading. Made by Counselor Larch, seconded by Counselor Klein. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Klein, yes. Counselor Larch?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Now, we're at eighteen point zero zero three, "In order to appropriate Community Preservation Act funds for open space acquisition."
Approved, second.
Made by Counselor Larch, seconded by Counselor Klein. Any discussion?
I think they want two readings, Counselor.
I believe they did want two readings on this. But here in our first reading, uh, roll call, please.
Counselor Larch?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Yes.
Suspend Rule fourteen.
Motion to suspend rules, seconded by Counselor Klein. Any discussion on the suspension of rules? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If votes no, rules suspended. Is there a motion to approve on second reading?
Some moved.
Second.
Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Larch. Any discussion? Um, let's have a roll call, please.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
And Counselor Larch?
Yes.
That is approved on second reading. Uh, now eighteen point zero zero seven, "In order to appropriate CPA funds for the Mass Central Rail Trail Extension." Motion to approve this.
Motion to approve?
Made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Klein. Any discussion on this order? Roll call, please.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Larch?
Yes.
And Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Order eighteen point zero zero eight, "In order to appropriate CPA funds for the Sergeant House Expansion Project at eighty-two Bridge Street."
Moved, approved.
Made by Counselor Klein, seconded by Counselor Bidwell. Any discussion on this? Real quick. Counselor Nash?
Yeah, I, I just want to compliment Valley CDC on the outreach that they did around this project, that they, you know, that it was exhaustive, and that, you know, as the Ward Three counselor, I'm a hundred percent behind it. And it's, it's going to be terrific. It's going to be really great. That's all.
Good. I echo your comments as the former Ward Three counselor. Thank you. Any other discussion? Uh, roll call, please.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Larch?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes. Eighteen point zero zero nine, "In order to appropriate CPA funds for affordable housing," excuse me, "as part of the Village Hill Apartments."
Moved, approved. Seconded.
Counselor Dwight, second, excuse me, made by Counselor Bidwell, and seconded by Counselor Dwight. Any discussion on this? Um, roll call, please.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Larch?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
And Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes. Eighteen point zero ten, "In order to appropriate CPA funds to the Conservation Fund."
Moved, approved.
Subject?
Seconded. Any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Larch?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Eighteen point zero eleven, "In order to appropriate CPA funds for Pioneer Valley Habitat for Humanity Home on Garfield Avenue." First reading.
Approved, approved.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Okay, made by Counselor Klein, seconded by Counselor Shara. Any discussion? Uh, roll call, please.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein, yes. Counselor Larch?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
And Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
And Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Larch?
Yes.
And Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
And Counselor Larch?
Yes.
And Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Larch?
Yes.
And Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Order eighteen point zero zero eight, "In order to appropriate CPA funds for the Sergeant House Expansion Project at eighty-two Bridge Street."
Moved, approved.
Made by Counselor Klein, seconded by Counselor Bidwell. Any discussion on this order? Roll call, please.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
A referral might be in order at some point.
But can I offer just a little bit of introduction?
Please do, yes.
I guess several of these are, well, to be specific, the additional language about committee study requests and the additional language about referral of matters to committees is just based on what I think would be the desirability of having a few more matters that come before this body referred to committee for investigation, for inquiry, for receiving testimony from a broad range of stakeholders and to just encourage further deliberation before we as a body take votes on matters. So that was the motivator behind both the additional language on committee study request and the reference to referrals to further matters to committees. And I'll just say a word about the other two and then let my co-sponsors say what they would like to say. There was a time when our council rules said that once a year, the council would adopt by resolution its legislative agenda. In other words, the matters that we as a council would like to see our legislators take up. We never did that, at least in my short time here, and that rule was stricken. But I do think there would be some value in having at least once a year, perhaps twice a year, a discussion, a discussion involving the mayor about what are the mayor's state legislative priorities? So we all as counselors have some sense of what the mayor's priorities are. All of us at one time or another have occasion to find ourselves in the company of Representative CoCot or Senator Rosenberg. It always seems to me a little bit ad hoc as to what I use that five minutes for to talk to him about. I think it'd be interesting to just have a little more cohesive sense of priorities. And I've discussed this with the mayor, and he would entertain the notion of engaging the council in such a conversation. And finally, on conduct, I've suggested some language that adds a little bit to our current language regarding civility and respect in public, in public comment. I think it's fairly benign language that would, of course, always be at the discretion of the presiding officer to enforce, but I would encourage us to consider that additional clarifying language, you know, leave it to others to weigh in.
Council Shara, would you like this?
Yeah, so in terms of the state legislative priorities, I would like to resurrect what I think was a good idea originally by Council O'Donnell that never was used, but I've just noted in the past, let's say, the past term, we've had quite a few resolutions that were focused on state legislation or that were about matters that were before state boards. For example, the charter school expansion, school bus safety, pregnant workers fairness, Medicare for all, safe communities, we just had one tonight, fifteen dollar minimum wage. And some were driven by community members, some were initiated by counselors. And I feel like at this moment, there's an increased interest in state legislation as we try to protect or assert ourselves against the federal situation. And the mayor does a great job of lobbying for North Hampton, and I think that we could have a very informative conversation with him about what he sees on the horizon and what part we could take in that. In terms of the language about, let's say, decorum in the chambers, you've, this is something I've sort of complained about recently. I'll just note from my seat that when there are conversations or banter or exclamations, that it's extremely hard for me to hear council discussions. This has actually happened like quite a few times tonight, and it's really, I don't know if it's something about my seat or the acoustics, but I can hear every, I can tell you the conversation that the mayor had with Sam at one point. I can hear everything. And so it's hard, sorry, Sam. So I would like us to find a way to maybe make this, you know, make a situation where everyone can hear. And I, you know, I appreciate people's enthusiasm, but it is disruptive, and it's not always momentary because sometimes these sort of moments of celebration splinter off into conversations, and it's usually at the conclusion of a matter for that group, but it's rarely at the conclusion for us. And that's, I think, we need to be able to hear what's going on. Just another case in point is that at the, our last meeting, I actually didn't hear the motion to adjourn and didn't vote. I had no idea it happened until I turned to Council Dwight. So I, we shouldn't be conducting business if we can't hear. And I think the council president has often asked members of the public to refrain from shows of approval or disapproval. And I don't expect that us putting it into the rules are going to change that behavior, but I do find it's helpful to be able to point to something to say that it's explicitly our policy. And it also makes it clear that we're not calling out a specific person, again, sorry, Sam, or directed at, you know, a certain group or a person, that this is just our standing role for all. Then, moving on to five point two point one, this is maybe the most minor change, but it's perhaps the largest discussion, and maybe this isn't the time to have it if we're going to, if there's an idea that we may refer this because it's sort of, that's what it's about. But this proposal is just like a slight emphasizing of what is already in our rules, which is that generally matters before us may be referred. And that's any matter, not just binding legislation, and they may be put up for a vote, they'd be put up for a vote for referral to committee or commission. But it's come, that's come up a couple of times recently, and there's been some discussion about it and questioning specifically about whether it's appropriate to refer resolutions. And I think that this is an opportunity to have a fuller discussion about that. So again, it doesn't have to happen now if we're going to refer it, but I have other thoughts on that. But that's my impetus for this.
Thank you very much. Council Nash is the other sponsor, and Council LaBarge after.
Thank you. So the first thing I'd like to speak to is the four point seven demonstration of members of the public and that, you know, so last week, while I was speaking, there was quite, there was a very vocal response to my rhetorical question that did answer my question, but that, that weren't, you know, so much in the zone of my own thoughts, it probably would have thrown me off track. And that, and I think that's basically what we're trying to avoid here. And I, you know, and that I realize that there's times where you're watching the golf, you know, the golf match, the tennis match, that's what we're doing here rather than the baseball game or the football game, you know, where the, you know, the people present are to be, you know, quiet and respectful. And I get that sometimes, you know, that the emotions get you. I understand that, but I think it's good that we outline that so that our deliberations don't get interfered. So that's to that point. As far as the, you know, connecting up the work that we do, especially around resolutions with the, with what's going on at the State House, I think it's critical because, first of all, us getting feedback is a really good thing, but also when we're sending it back towards the State House, that it's actually something that our representatives, they can put those resolutions in their hipoc, in their hip pocket, and it becomes part of their ammo to make their case. So I think that's a terrific idea. And as far as, you know, referring things out to committee, I think that what's difficult, I mean, and we saw a lot of this over the last four, it seems like, ten months of, you know, people, once things are at this level, it's hard to, rules prevent us from interacting. And that, and I was just talking about it with Jess and Sarah out in the hall, that isn't this so much nicer, we're just talking right here, you know, that, you know, for four months, oftentimes, you know, it's been a one-way street where, you know, we're deliberating, they're over there, they're talking at us. And the great thing about committee is that interaction can happen and that, and I, you know, and in fact, I tell people that, you know, if you want to affect what goes on at council, you have to get stuff at committee. Once it gets here, then, you know, it's a much harder thing to have your voice impact the legislation. So things going to committee is terrific. And I think that's all I'll say for right now.
Thank you, Council. Council LaBarge, did you have?
Yes. I like this idea, like with our state reps, Senator Rosenberg. About three years ago, I asked about that. It would be great if we could have that visibility, so I'm glad that language is in there. I also do agree about conduct. I really had a hard time with a bunch of people sitting around in the back of me and clicking their fingers, which affected my hearing aids terribly. And I have to say that our counselor-at-large, Bill Dwight, handled it in due respect. And I just think that, I hope I don't see that happen again.
Thank you. Any other comments, Council Dwight?
I am interested in having this referred, but beyond that, I would also, I need actually more to that point, the additional four point seven, the addition of four point seven. Right? The very first act that I had proposed, the very first rule change I proposed when I got elected, what, sixteen, how long ago? Sixteen, seventeen, eighteen years ago, whatever? A long, long time ago. Was to call for more decorum and civility within the chamber. Because at the time, there was pronounced antipathies expressed by counselors.
Yes.
Towards the mayor. Audience screaming, yelling, demonstrations, protestations. It made what you've experienced recently look like a tea party. There was lots of drama. The mayor would, had walked out at one point.
I remember.
The mayor left in tears. There were physical threats. And I proposed, and as a new counselor, that kind of shook me to the core, disturbed me, and I proposed a civility rule. And it's interesting because my thoughts on that have evolved over the years. There was pushback, actually, from the ACLU. It was the, Bill Newman, actually, and among others, that said, it is laudable to aspire to that, it is wrong to codify it in some way, to codify the, you know, telling people they can't demonstrate or perform demonstration. We also, when I, I mean, I think within the first few weeks of when I got reelected for my second run, we were occupied. Which point, the whole system was completely disrupted. The mayor had the option of actually gabbling the meeting to a close. Did not, he chose not to. But we actually strayed from the rules. But the mayor, who was the presiding officer in both instances when I was introduced, when I was, these disruptions occurred, managed it in their own way, given, and making accommodations and exceptions. My concern with this, this kind of amplification of what we already basically do is, when I did as council president, which you have done as well, which is to make a gentle request to respect the decorum of the chamber. When we make it a rule that you cannot demonstrate, then you've done, because what we're doing here is the people's business. We may, it may, it does affect and impact how we conduct the people's business. But I don't know if necessarily it is something that we want to diminish in any way. I mean, one of the things that, the lamentable parts that Council Nash referred to is you can't have that free exchange. It is true, we are limited in some respects by our own rules on our conduct. But at the same time, we can, we can, at least under the rules of free speech, say horrible things to each other, have horrible fights, be ad hominem as much as we want because it's not precluded. We ask that we respect the decorum, but we don't require it. And when we start to require it, I think we run into trouble. I think we actually, then, we start, we start pushing them away and in the name of us doing efficient business. And that's why I, you know, if we, if I'd like to flesh out this thought in this conversation, it's just my initial response to my first reading of this, the first action in time I've read this. I think the legislative priorities addition is actually perfect. I think it's a great workaround for what we were trying to achieve but did not and didn't manage to do. As far as any council referring any matter, I have no problem with that. I do have a problem if it's used as a tactic, but then there it is, if it is a tactic, it's a tactic. We just, we have lots of parliamentary procedures that can be maneuvered and used as tactics. It doesn't subvert or necessarily stop or prevent a law or a resolution, but at the same time, I mean, I, my preference would be that they be referred to for actual.
Any other comments? Council Klein, please.
I'm kind of going to echo what Council Dwight just shared. I had a real reaction to that one piece around kind of strengthening the civility piece. I think, I think it's up to the council president as the presiding officer to, don't want to echo you exactly, Council Dwight, but to gently remind folks that we need to be able to hear that something might be rude. But to me, what's so important about us as elected officials is that we are interacting in vibrant ways with the public and with our constituents and with people on issues that they really care about. And that's not to say that I think it's okay for people to be rude or nasty, but I think when you sharpen language too much, it has kind of ripple effects. It has meaning for people that makes them feel shut down. And the last thing I want to do is shut down the conversations and shut down people's sense of their ability to engage with us in whatever ways they want. If it's truly impeding our process in some way, I think that would be the council president's job to, or, you know, we had Council Shara one day couldn't hear and said something, and I think that was totally appropriate. But to codify it feels like we're, you know, the teachers and we're waggling our fingers at the, you know, the problematic children. And I don't like the tone of the language to be perfectly direct and honest about it. So that was my feeling about that one. The legislative, bringing the mayor into, to talk about state legislative priorities, I think it's a great idea. One thing, though, that I, I'm kind of playing with an idea in my head, which may be taking this to a place that the sponsors don't want to go, but I'm thinking about some kind of friendly amendment that is having, not just talking about state priorities, but communicating with the mayor about his priorities and his, for the city, not at the state level. One of my frustrations consistently has been that we're not, the lines of communication between the council and the president and the mayor haven't been robust enough for me. And I would like to know more about what he's working on and what he's thinking about. And so if the, and I'm just kind of floating an idea here at this point, but if the sponsors would be open to expanding the language a little bit to say, a discussion about state legislative priorities and priorities for the city or the mayor's priorities, ideas for the city, something like that, so that we could actually codify a little bit the communication lines between us and the mayor. So those are my thoughts about these.
Thank you. I should note, it sounds like the will of the council is to refer this because there are many complex matters that are emerging. That's just my note. Any other discussion? Council Diddwell.
I'll save the rest of it for committee, but just as a response, Council Klein, I, I, as one of the, certainly welcomes some modified language like that, but I'll further say, and I was discussing this earlier today with Council O'Donnell, I agree that there are various areas where more robust conversation with the mayor, I think, would be welcome. One of those is in our budget process, and I will separately be recommending that we encourage early in our budget process, just a more open-ended conversation, you know, before the 250-page document is laid on us, just a conversation about priorities and ideas we're hearing from our constituents that could work their way into the budget process. So I think, I think that's one of those areas where we really should encourage a little more conversation earlier in the process. But that's another matter.
So what's the, what's the will of the council with this matter? Would it be referral to legislative matters?
Moved to refer to legislative matters.
Okay, the motion is made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the referral to legislative matters, Council Nash?
It would make sense with a, with this language that talks about referring stuff to committee, that this actually should go to committee. We should model it.
Yes.
Probably so.
Refer to the committee on irony and. Any other discussion on the referral? Those in favor of referrals, please say aye.
Aye.
If it's no, so that order is referred. One more order, this is eighteen point zero one six, in order to amend the council rules relative to the Committee on Public Works and Utilities. Unless there's any objection, I'll wave reading. Is there a motion on this order?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. If I may, this is the idea that I put forward as part of the assignments that I made on As I stated, the Committee on Public Works and Utilities is sort of the successor to another body that is sort of, was sort of defunct, and we tried this new approach for about two years. I frankly think through no fault of our own, I think it just didn't work because it didn't meet and it hasn't met for almost 300 days. My concern is less that we need to somehow create agenda items to create busy work for a committee, which clearly has a smaller workload and scope in the post-division-of-powers era in North Hampton, than it is that there be a standing committee with public works as part of its jurisdiction that citizens know they can go to, that it's going to meet. I think of the Transportation and Parking Commission. It's not just things that are on the agenda, it's, you know, people know they can come and they can raise issues in public comment, and I think that's important. So what this order proposes would be taking the elements of the Public Works and Utilities Committee, and you can see that they are bolded and underlined, and you can also see that there's not very much, and putting it into the City Services Committee on the theory that city services and public works go well together. And my thinking was, city services has work in its committee, but maybe it's, maybe the agendas of city services are more like 90% full than 100% full, just from my experience on the committee. But it's a judgment for the whole council to make about whether they want. But it's a judgment for the whole council to make about whether they want to do that. But to me, that makes sense, and then we'd have a committee that meet, the City Services is an active committee. So Counselor Carney?
Yes, I appreciate the reasoning that you put into this, Counselor. The only thing I would note is that the City Services Committee is an amalgamation already of four committees. There was appointments and evaluations. When I first came on, it had been the Fire Committee, which became Public Safety, which included then Fire and Police. So what became City Services was the amalgamation of appointments, Public Safety, Social Services and Veterans, Veterans Affairs, and Senior Center.
That's part of Social Services and Veterans. So I, and for, in your experience, as you know, we dealt with, I'm not sure the total number, but at least well over 100 appointments in the, in the last year, probably a couple hundred in the last term. We have five on the, you know, on the docket tonight. And I just, you know, I, I think as we, as we continue to push kind of, it becomes kind of a catch-all, this committee becomes the catch-all for most other, for most services. And certainly, most things can be related to City Services. So for City Services, we'd now have the big three, Police, Fire and, Police, Fire and, Public Works, and then, of course, all the others that are listed, including the Building Department and the Health Department and all of the social, I mean, there's a lot of, I don't see that we would be able to meet the requirements of the, unless we were to consider then really ways of streamlining meeting with three departments at once on a regular basis, trying to figure out it would require some creative scheduling. The only thing that I can consider that I don't, I'm not suggesting at all, is to look at, I mean, that could, that could easily be the work of two committees, and I can understand why the Public Works and Utilities may not be its own, but if there were a committee that took care of the big three of Public Safety, Police, Fire and Public Works, and then something else that took care of appointments, Social Services, and, you know, all of those, I'm just putting it out there, I don't object to the, to the rule change per se, I just think that it could set us up for not being, especially if we're talking about referring, many items could end up referred to City Services. I'm, I'm talking about, we've generally taken care of all of the major hires and appointments, senior, you know, Senior Center Director, interim City Clerk, all of those require a lot of dedicated meeting time. So I just put it out there as saying that, you know, it's, it's a, it's a big load for that committee. And, and, you know, for example, Legislative Matters had been the committee for appointments, and arbitrarily, it seemed to be taken out of Legislative Matters and given to the City Services Committee, which was Public Safety. But I have to say that the appointments is a, you know, is a big chunk of that, of that committee. So if you look at all of the committees and look at City Services, I do think it's already, you may point to, think of it as 90%, but it, it does feel like, in order to meet the charge of the committee, it's a lot of work.
And I appreciate that perspective. So Counselor Dwight, Counsel Levarage and Counsel Bidwell?
A lot, now, a large portion of the responsibility of, particularly stuff related to departments, and then we separate appointments, are just simply presentations. We actually, in, under the new charter, we really don't have too much authority over them other than budgetary. So, and the presentations, in the past, and I think it's because the, it's, part of the problem was we had legacy, legacy procedures that weren't, you know, that we, you know, there weren't, the SSVHS at one point was another committee that became catch-all, but it was basically a presentation forum. There was no, there were no orders coming out of it, there were no votes that came out of it, there were, there was nothing that ever really even got referred back to this floor. And in a large portion of this, for instance, hearing from Public Safety, hearing from the DPW and everything else, does not get referred back to the body at large for deliberation debate. I mean, the purposes ultimately of the committees is, is referral points where we can get more granular, as Counselor Nash referred to, on issues that allow us to, to vote and do our job with more clarity. Then there's the functionary part, which is, you know, researching and approving appointments. And, and I think to, we're, we're struggling with, you know, the DPW was a legacy problem. There was, there was, when the Board of Public Works existed, there was a liaison committee that actually at one point was proved to be quite helpful and fruitful, because we actually had some authority, but not as much as we actually now have for settings, setting the water and sewer rates. And the hope was here, was that establishing this committee would allow the opportunity for the public discussion and broader discourse and presentation of the sewer and water rates. Well, we did that, Counsel Bidwell did that, and then we realized, oh, wait a minute, there really isn't any much, we don't have much aegis over any other dimension of this department, not the way that we used to or some influence. And the concern was the council getting more and more divorced from the departments and having less involvement and engagement and, and kind of giving up that authority we see at. You're, Counsel Carney's right, when I first came on, we had, we had the police, we had a separate committee for police, a separate committee for parking, a separate committee for fire, and there were at times when certain counselors not quite understanding the parameters of authority would treat them as police commissions or fire commissions, where we actually dictated policy and dictated performance and, and also threatened employees, among other things, and interfered in collective bargaining. And that, that was not good. That was bad. But the fact is, we felt that we still have to hold on to some kind of vestigial connection. And I think it's true, I think it's important for us in order to, I mean, our job is to try and be fairly fluent in at least the challenges facing each one of these departments as we start to work on budget priorities. All that said, I think that, that there's less need, I don't, not sure about the need, and I haven't sat on, served on this committee, so I, I'm speaking complete ignorance, but less of a need to have presentations that could be probably dealt with with a memo. But maybe not. Maybe there is some intrinsic and real value that can be realized. But it, it is true, I think, that there's, there's a collection of stuff here, this has sort of been heaped on this committee, that requires time, but not much product, other than the approval of appointments. And so I can appreciate Counsel Carney's frustration, but at the same time, I think that we, maintaining these committees, we are maintaining just busy work that does not have any effective, real value to us as a, as a committee, as a council.
Thank you. Counselor, so Counselor Levarage, you were next.
I have the same concerns that Counselor Carney has. I think when you're talking about the Board of Public Works and the infrastructure and being included in that with everything else that we know, that has, that we have a responsibility to do, you were also Counselor O'Donnell on the committee too, who was involved in that committee. So I'm a little wary about adding the public works onto what we have already. And I don't know which way we could go about solving that problem, but I think it's a little overwhelming.
Okay. Counsel Bidwell?
Two, two thoughts on this. One, as the Chair of Public Works and Utilities, a little, a little bit of background on the, on the fact that we have not met for a number of months. There, we've, I've been in discussions with the mayor about tweaks to the stormwater ordinance and the credit policy. And we all kind of decided that rather than take those up in the middle of a mayoral campaign and further entangle them in electoral politics, it would make a lot of sense to defer those to the start of the new session. So we intended, not engaged in, in some issues and, and, and put them off. Similarly, we've been asking Director Lascalian, the mayor, to, to present a little more robust explanation of the methodology that determines paving priorities in the city. And that, too, was going to get tackled in the new year in this, in this committee. So some, some of these issues are, they've been brewing and we've been preparing to, to tackle them at the start of the new year. And so it's sort of been intentional that they, we, we didn't talk about them in the last three or four months. So, so, so the, the activity before that committee for the last three or four months, I don't believe is indicative of, of, of the issues that are appropriately brought to that, that committee. Nonetheless, I do, I do, I'm sympathetic to the, to the desire to combine them. And my, my second thought is that, like Counselor Dwight, I certainly am not attached to bringing in department heads for the sake of bringing in department heads. As a matter of fact, I thought one of the more fruitful conversations that we had in the City Services Committee was when we decided we wanted to bring numerous city officials and other officials for a more thematic conversation. The conversation we had about the opioid crisis comes to mind, where we had emergency services, we had public health, we had Hampshire Hopes, we even had the DA's office in here. And it wasn't individual departments kind of just talking for the sake of, we asked them to be here, but it was a really substantive interchange. And I, that would be my approach to how we continue to be engaged with those departments, but, but around themes where we might have two or three or four all, all appear at the same time for, for conversation. So I, I think, I think there's a way to make it work, but we should be aware that we're at, we're putting a lot on this committee, if, if we do this consolidation.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy.
I sort of recall that the, Counsel Spector was very into this Public Works Committee in its day, and as I recall, the, kind of the justification, once the new charter came in and it was clear that there was a pretty hard line between the departments and the legislative branch, the thing that, that kind of allowed it to survive was its role on water and sewer rates. I mean, that was really the reason it lived. If it wasn't for that, it wouldn't have lived at all. And if, I mean, if, if, if that role got sent to Finance, where every other financial thing goes, and Finance did the water and sewer rates like the rest of the budget stopped. And then, you know, and I agree with what you're saying, because having, I, I was on City Services when it was the obligatory presentation on EMS, and, you know, we're busy when they were starting their ambulance service, but once it got up and running, was just sort of a monitoring thing. But as a place to refer something relative to DPW, but, but not imply that, you know, once a cycle, you gotta have the DPW director in to do a presentation, but it's more where do you, where would you refer something that you would have sent to the other committee? And clearly, there was not a lot of stuff sent there in the last term. If it's, if something arises that needs to get referred somewhere of, of a city service nature, it would go there. But if, if you send the water sewer rates over to Finance and say, hey, City Services, it's not like you have to have these people in a rotation where you visit with them all the time, but if we have an issue we want to send somewhere to refer for an opinion, we'd send it there, but don't expect it to require you to have them in all the time for, for presentations that aren't action-oriented. In fact, you may want, the committee may want to think that in general, do we want to do the presentation thing, or do we want to just be where, you know, where something gets referred if there's action required by the council? But it necessarily doesn't mean you have to, to make work and have them come in and, and do presentations, unless there's an issue on the table. And then you have them in.
Counselor Dwight, unless, yeah, Counselor Dwight?
To expand on that, we actually have the budget hearing process where most of those things, most of the items that even during the course of the presentations of the departments are covered, again, they're rehashed for the purposes of, of, of the budget analysis. I think, I think those are, and that's a separate program, that's actually set up, that's not even necessarily done in committees, that, that can be done as hearings, as series of hearings. So to that extent, a significant portion of that, I mean, and I do understand the desire by the council too, because I do, my concern, of course, is getting too detached. The, I mean, this is the issue of trying to balance separation of powers, becoming too detached. We, we don't have authority, we, we do have influence, and we also do, it's incumbent upon us to at least have some understanding when we address these things in the budget or as we draft and create law that would impact and affect these departments. As long as there's a venue for which they can gather at, as opposed to a mandatory show up, give us your dog and pony show, we'll, we'll, we'll waste your time, you'll waste ours, and we'll, and, and we'll call, we'll say we met. And that, I, you know, that's always been my frustration with a lot of the committees that we've had sometimes, and I know, I don't, I'm not alone in that, I'll just be the one who speaks most frankly about it, I think, in that case, because I, I have heard over the years that I was serving as president from a number of committee chairs, that this is really kind of annoying, and it is time-consuming, and it has no real or substantive value. So I think that this actually forces us to reassess and think about what's the best, most efficacious way to conduct polity in a way that the committee structure affords us, and take advantage of that and not just do it for the sake of doing it.
Yeah, because I agree, the old Public Safety Committee.
Yeah.
I've bopped chairs on that a couple of times. You know, we did a lot of good work, as I mentioned, when ambulance was going to be taken over full-time by Fire, our relationship with them over the two years that that was happening was really meaningful, because we could bring their plan here, we, we did a lot of work because there was something going on there. But on an ongoing basis, now that the program's up and running, it doesn't really need the oversight it needed, we didn't have the questions that we had when they were starting it. So, I mean, I think it's, it's up to that committee to kind of turn it up and turn it down depending on what's going on, and be a place where referrals go when action is needed. But, you know, busy work and making a department head put together a PowerPoint to come in and say, status quo, you know, maybe that's not the best use of everybody's time.
So I think they shut the heat off. I don't know if you feel that.
I think so.
It's getting pretty cold. And so what's the council's will or pleasure for this? For it? Do you want to vote on, or do you want to refer it to Legislative Matters for more discussion?
Yeah.
I'm prepared to vote for it now. I mean, you know, but.
Well, yeah, as the author, I'm going to suggest we refer it, because it sounds like there's still some things to hash out, and Counsel Murphy brings up an idea about Finance handling hearings, for example, and that's a worthy counter suggestion.
There had to be a venue for a public hearing on water sewer rates, and so it was DPW, but it could just as easily be Finance.
Makes sense to me.
Yeah, and I take Counsel Carney's opinions quite seriously as the Chair of the committee. So that's, I'm making a motion to refer to Legislative Matters. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Dwight. Any discussion on the referral? If not, all those, discussion on?
Should we consider also referring it to City Services? So that they could discuss?
I think that's too much personally.
Jeez.
Then we really are in a.
That, that is a world of irony.
Then we'll wind up looking back at our own heads or something.
I think that is an ironic suggestion.
No other discussion on the question of the referral? If not, all those in favor of the referral, please say aye.
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 Any new business for the evening? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any opposed or adjourned? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.